Welcome to the special meeting of the Bakersfield City Council. Now speaking, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Goh.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 12:00 PM Department Head Presentation Meeting of May 10th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to meetings such as this one. Therefore, seating in the chamber is limited. This meeting has limited public access, therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. If you're here to speak on the workshop item 3A, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation. If you're unable to stay for the presentation, you may speak now on the workshop item. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk who will give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts a meeting such as repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Goh, we've received one public speaker card.
Go ahead and call that person, please.
Riddhi Patel.
Good afternoon. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
My name is Riddhi Patel. You guys already know me, and you guys know that I support defunding the police as a step to abolition so that our communities, especially ones that have been historically disinvested in by your city, could actually receive the public services that they need. I also want to stress that the first step to defunding the police is a participatory budgeting process where Bakersfield taxpayers, including myself, actually have a say in where my taxpayer money goes. And I don't know if it's just that you're so incompetent that you guys can't get it through your thick skulls, but you guys are failing, Bakersfield community members, and you guys are so removed from reality that you can't even do the bare minimum. Tomorrow, SEIU has a picket because the county won't even raise their wages. You guys like to act like you're for workers. You're not for workers. Most of you probably wouldn't even agree with raising the minimum wage. So I would like it if you guys would understand that nobody and the majority of this community do not like you. And I really want to stress that many people in your department, many people you consider your allies, I have personally [BLEEP] shocked all of you with, and they would agree. But they know that you guys all have such huge egos that they have to placate you, they have to kiss the ring, because you guys are so petty that you would remove community funding because you got your feelings hurt, because you guys are that idiotic and that fragile that you're going to tell me that the 400,000 roughly Bakersfield community members that pay tax money, that pay into Measure N, don't deserve the right to tell you where their taxpayer money goes. Republicans, Democrats, and independents alike would like that access. But you guys are so incompetent, including City Manager Christian Clegg, especially you, Mayor, especially you, Eric Arias, and Andre Gonzalez, as well as all of you, including you Patty Gray, who told me roughly two months ago that you can't be racist because you have a black friend. All of you guys are so unbelievably idiotic. I really want to stress that, that you think you have the capabilities and knowledge to decide what to do with hundreds of millions of dollars when you won't even let the community who pay the tax money have a say in this. And you guys are all such a disgrace.
Do we have any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item 3A, Number 1, Fire Department Budget Presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg, any opening comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you today in this workshop setting. We have this workshop and a second workshop for the balance of the departments that are not covered today. Last year, our timeframe was very constricted because we had to redo the budget in light of the pandemic, and we were under some significant time constraints. And this year, we're fortunate to be able to have our department heads come and present their budgets and walk through some highlights from accomplishments that happened in the year, and then walk through what our budget is looking like for next year. And our first one is Chief Gallegiza.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Anthony Gallegiza, your Bakersfield Fire Chief. I'm excited every year that I get to present our budget proposal just for the simple fact that I watch as the fire department continues to progress through the general fund and also through the hard-working firefighters that I do have that work for us and for this city so hard, and also for the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure that has changed the landscape of us being able to better serve the citizens of Bakersfield. Prior to the presentation, I'd love to introduce some people, rock stars that make it all happen. And first off, our newly-promoted Deputy Fire Chief of Specialized Service, just promoted today, Kevin Albertson. And behind me, Operations Chief, Bill Ballard. And our Support Services Chief, John Frando. And we cannot do this without my business manager, Tony Crosby. First off, we want to start off with a mission statement. It is a critical part of how we believe and how we operate within the fire department and how your Bakersfield City firefighters work for this city. Mission of the Bakersfield Fire Department is to protect, engage, and inspire a safe community while delivering legendary customer service. And the way we look at that is when we walk away from an incident, an emergency, a public service call, that we do provide that legendary customer service, and that's prevalent in our firefighters. And beneath that, you'll see our core values, the acronym of PRIDE, professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. Those are all important to us. Before we get on to the financials, I would like to talk about certain accomplishments that were through 2020 and 2021. This fiscal year, a lot has been done, and especially through PSVS and also through our general fund. And I continue to see the Bakersfield Fire Department progress because of decisions that are brought before, ideas that are brought before you, and decisions made by council. First, we had numerous grant funding opportunities and took advantage of State Homeland Security and California Water Foundation, which Chief Frando, we'll go into more detail later on in the presentation. Also, we have, through the Center for Public Safety Excellence, our accreditation process, we've completed Phase 2, which is the strategic plan, which I'm very excited about. We'd given it a copy to all of you in the beginning of the year, and that is something, is a five-year strategic plan that lays out our goals for this fire department, and it's first in the Bakersfield City Fire Department. I'm proud of that because that was a goal of mine coming in as Fire Chief almost three years ago, was to complete this strategic plan and gets us on the roadmap of where we should be going as a department. We are also very, very engaged in the social media aspect. We want to get out proper education, safety messages, but we also want the taxpayers to see what they're getting for their tax dollars. And to us, that's critical, and it's critical nature for us to push forward and for them to see how their fire department is progressing and how we're out there all the time through Facebook, through Instagram, through Twitter, through public service announcements. And anytime we can look towards bringing in through recruitment, through diversity and inclusion, and that's what we're looking for every single time we're out there through our social media processes and also through just general media. These numbers here, I'm quite proud of, in achieving 88% return on our compliance for outstanding violations, and also especially the 92% of business handling hazardous materials that were inspected this past year, in that we've adopted the 2019 Fire Code. But those numbers show you a prevention division that is out there every single day along with company inspections to keep the city safe. And by getting 92%, they continue to be the top in the state with that number. Other accomplishments through COVID, we've had a rough COVID year, and we know that with our firefighters. A lot of things have had to been stopped, continued, moved forward, moved back. It's just been all over the place, as we all know. And we have remained COVID compliant. We have many of our deputy chiefs on state boards to make sure that we are in constant communication, seeing what state practices are and where we should be as a department. That being said, we have 12 working task force groups, whether that be emergency medical services, fire suppression, wellness. It continues, and we have over 80% of our fire department personnel are involved at least in one task force to make the Bakersfield City Fire Department better. And that is something we incorporated over two years ago to make sure that our department could have some say from firefighter to Fire Chief of what they wanted their department to look like and us to be able to progress on those good ideas. We've had, in the past year, we had a recruitment for battalion chief, captain, and fire engineer. And we also continue succession planning because that's important within the Bakersfield Fire Department, that we teach our firefighters all the way through to Fire Chief, that that next level is attainable. And however hard they want to work, we have those succession planning available. We have, whether it's teaching, mentoring, and shadowing, we will produce the next fire officers. We also continuously communicate in a advantageous way through our bi-monthly newsletter, and that goes out to even our retirees, to see what every area, whether it's training, operations, specialized services, and the events going on within the department, and for them to understand that they're still part of this department. And it continually communicates to the firefighter what they need to get involved in, what they would need to know, and that information is readily available. And we keep it available all year long, and that bi-monthly newsletter is important to us. Also, additional accomplishments, 4th of July fireworks task force. I know it's important to council. Your firefighters are out there every 4th of July, 3rd, 4th, and 5th generally. Generally, start on the 1st, our arson units are out there, and they're making sure that their people are compliant. This is an overwhelming task, but they're out there every single year, and we make sure that Bakersfield and Kern County understands the limitations of what kind of safe and sane fireworks are, and continually will continue to push that message throughout. But our task force will be out this year as well, this year with Bakersfield Police Department. We continue our joint agency training with Bakersfield Police Department and also with Kern County Fire Department and other agencies throughout the state because we find it that we get our best practices when we look outside of ourselves, in that Bakersfield is an island in the sense of Fresno being 100 miles away in LA County in the other direction, that we will make sure that we understand best practices within all fire agencies to make us a better department. Next, you'll see the 11 deployments that we have been on through master mutual aid throughout the state. This slide shows the 11 involvements that we've had and how we've been heavily involved at the state level. And we continue to do that to support our other fire departments within the state as they fight fire, whether it be flooding, rescue situations. Bakersfield Fire Department will be there to assist on the state level. This next slide, I'd like to bring up Operations Chief, Bill Ballard, to better describe the two rescue units in which you put in place last year and we activated in July. I told you last year that it will save lives. These units will save lives. We've heard story after story. But I've stated this before, we don't go off emotion. We go off the data that comes forward of what we'll produce to be able to prove to council and the taxpayer what they're getting for the dollars that were put forth in the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure. So at this point, I'd like to call up Chief Ballard, our Deputy Chief in Charge of Operations.
Honorable Mayor, Senate Counsel, my name's Bill Ballard, Deputy Chief, also Accreditation Manager for the Center for Public Safety Excellence. And so this has been a three-year process, and some of the things that we derived out of our analysis of our department, which included a complete community risk assessment and standard of cover, a strategic plan, and a self-assessment manual. So that brings me to the rescue units and their accomplishments. These two particular first-in districts happen to be of particular interest to us in the fire department because of the high call volume. So through analyzing data related to calls, not only EMS but also fire-related calls, we determined that we were not meeting our own standards, let alone national standards. So with these units, and what we're able to do is effectively provide a available resource. And so when you think about, well, why is that important? Well, first of all, the time clock is our enemy. The clock is our enemy. And so the minute an event occurs, whether it's fire-related or EMS, that is what we're racing against to try to reverse. We have the time-temperature curve that, based on the type of structure, would give us an indication of the time we can expect that fire to progress beyond incipient, out into the room, beyond the room involvement, now into the neighboring building, or perhaps a cardiac arrest that between four and six minutes is irreversible effects due to oxygen deprivation. With these things in mind, we took a look at how come we were not meeting these response standards, and it's due to concurrent calls. These two areas in particular had high call volume, meaning that we had an engine that was on scene unable to take another call in their area. The most efficient way to handle that was to establish a rapid response unit. And so with the ensuing slides, the next two has some very basic data that kind of details how often in the first six months of operation that these units were actually responding out of their area, meaning that to understand a concurrent call from the time an engine's on scene, say it's 20 minutes, any call that comes in in that area is considered concurrent, meaning that apparatus is not available to take it. So we look at reliability and availability. If a resource is not available, it's not reliable, and then we get into the time-temperature curve, irreversible effects of cardiac arrest and oxygen deprivation. So with that, let's see if I covered everything in that slide. So when a concurrent call does happen before the rescue units were in service, it would mean that another unit from a neighboring district would have to respond in. Obviously, travel times are going to be the deciding factor. They're not going to be able to make it in time to make a difference in many cases. So this slide, I'll have to kind of explain it a little bit. It breaks it down into four different time increments. It's got Rescue 2, Engine 2, Rescue 6, and Engine 6. The black line is data from 2019. It's a complete full year. You'll see that it's over 5,100 calls for Engine 2 and 5,500 for Engine 6, a significant amount of calls. The yellow line is the overall total call volume for that engine in 2020. Now, it doesn't seem like there's a huge, I would say, reduction, although it is, I mean, they're still responding approximately 80% of what they were in 2019. But remember, that's only for six months. So that was the second six months of the year. So it's still a marked improvement. And one thing about this particular slide, you have to keep in mind, this is apparatus count, which I don't want to get into too much detail, but it's different than incident count, meaning that in some cases, both the rescue and engine responded, meaning that they would get double credit in this. So if you take and add the two together, rescue and engine, it's not necessarily the same. I mean, it's a larger amount than what would be for incident count because they would typically respond, say, on a traffic collision together. So it's, I can get one that has incident count that divides them up. This one's a little more compelling, so I used it. The third line, which appears to be blue or purple, that is the second half of the year for both Engine 2 and Engine 6. Really, the thing when we started noticing, obviously, the big difference is when you look at what the rescues were able to take off of the engines and allow them to be available for that additional call, which is, it's absolutely huge for us to have that available resource. Move on to the next slide. This one, what, this slide indicates how many concurrent calls just the rescues took outside of their first-in district. So I guess really what it's illustrating is even with two units at both Station 2 and Station 6, there still is concurrent calls. This is only for the first six months of, well, I should say, the last six months of 2020. So these calls don't include anything for this year. You can see by the slide that at the bottom, each station is identified that actually had a rescue responding into it. Engine 2 and Engine 6 were basically reciprocated the amount of times at 30 counts apiece at which they responded into their, into the opposite jurisdictions, or not jurisdictions, districts first in. So even with the two units, we still have concurrent call issues, albeit much better. Some of the other stations, I mean, you'll notice, look at Station 1, for example, there are two units capable and available to take calls in those areas, so it's not as frequent that the rescue has to take calls in those areas. So hopefully, that kind of gives you an update of accomplishments, its effectiveness. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chief Gallegiza.
Thank you, Chief Ballard. Okay, I'll slide through these quickly just because of the enormity of the numbers. And just this first slide basically breaks down into the different funds that we do have in fiscal year that was adopted and the proposed. And it shows you that it was broken down in these three areas, the general fund, certified unified program agencies, which is COOPA, which is permits, inspection fees, and then the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure, which gives you that total. This next slide further breaks down into a broadly allocated three sections of salaries and benefits, operating, and also within our capital. This slide just discusses the area and the branches that it's broken down to from our general fund and those inspection fees, permit fees through COOPA. And what this shows is, in the area of fire suppression, fire safety, and also through fire administration, where the money is broke down in those three branches, and you get a total there. This last one is the Public Safety and Vital Services, which is always going to be the smaller number due to smaller funding, obviously, or less funding. But this is the, broken down of the branches, also of fire suppression, fire safety, and how that is broken down within our fire administration as well. This is, these next few slides get really interesting in the sense of we always look at comparables. Where are we as a fire department? Where are we when compared to other agencies that are like cities, or like call volume, or like budgets? Many times, that's difficult to find, so you find where we are within a station range, personnel range, population range. But in this case, you'll see the comparable departments and the budgets that we reach out to every year to get a comparison of where we're at. And you can see that we're standing at, with 14 stations, one of the larger departments in Bakersfield, our budgets in comparison, we are ranked eighth with our other nine comparable jurisdictions. Well, you'll see that we're number two in comparable jurisdictions when it comes to call volume. We are just below Stockton. We have moved up one place from last year, and our call volume continues to increase, as you'll see, year after year. And fires, obviously, through vacant homes and other issues, we have increased in fire volume. And in other slides, we'll compare how in the last 10 years, which 10 years ago was the last time that we instilled a newer fire station, Station 14, and how we have grown in call volume since that time. So how does the BFD compare as far as the nine other jurisdictions we'd already shown you? I think this is critical to show how, what kind of bank for your buck you're getting as a taxpayer with the Bakersfield Fire Department. If you go to the left, the average budget, and you see there the $58.8 million, if you take the nine jurisdictions, you put them together, the average budget that they have is $58.8 million, while ours is at $48 million. Now, if you go to the middle, you'll see the average responses. Their total average response at $28,000 plus, and ours at almost $47,000. And you can see the disparity in how busy your Bakersfield firefighters are. The one that I like to mostly point to is budget per response. It's kind of a rudimentary, rough way of understanding, but when you break the budget up and you go per call, or per incident, or call for service, the average in the nine jurisdictions is at $2,061. And you could see, you get a good bank for your buck on the side of the $1,026, just a little less than half with the Bakersfield Fire Department, when you break the budgets down in per call, per incident. This next slide just breaks down that call volume and where we're at. You could see all, most departments will always be higher in emergency medical services, as you can see, but we rank much higher in fire calls and fire responses, and you can see that here as we go along. It'll break down that much easier. This is that decade spread that I had discussed earlier, and to be able to understand that when Station 14 was completed at the end of 2009 and went into service in the beginning of 2010. And you'll see right here that our fire call volume has, in the last decade, gone from 1,230 to 5,525. And that's just in a 10-year span. In the middle, you'll see our emergency medical services and how much that has increased, and the overall total incident is exponentially increased beyond that, and continually shows how busy those firefighters are and how needed those rescue units were for EMS, and that time-temperature curve, as Chief Ballard had talked about, the issue of time and showing up during a cardiac arrest, and how those lives have been saved. We've heard stories over and over again. This is a slide that we brought to the Oversight Committee. This entails the Public Safety and Vital Services Proposal portion of that. We requested a Thermo Fisher Gemini hazmat monitor. This monitor identifies numerous chemicals, and it assists our Type 1 hazmat team to stay at a rating of the Type 1 that they are. And what the Type 1 is, is they are equipped to respond to any hazardous materials incident at any time, and they have the personnel, the trained personnel, and also the equipment to respond. And this Thermo Fisher Gemini is a huge tool in monitoring those chemicals. And to just give you a better understanding, the nearest Type 1 team is in Visalia, and then you go to LA County. So it's a long spread between ag and oil and other issues we have within the city of Bakersfield and within Kern County, and having that Type 1 team, we're quite proud of. Just below that is the Plimo vent, or the diesel exhaust system that we requested. We have three more stations. The diesel exhaust, creating carcinogens, cancerous, causing agents that are in the environment from that. This is an exhaust system that we needed three more whole units to supply with our stations, and we will be complete. After that, it's just upkeep at that point. But these units will be such a help in firefighter wellness and keeping our firefighters safe. At this point, we go into the arson division statistics. These statistics are quite alarming. We had come to you probably two years ago with the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure and requested an additional company officer, an arson, and a battalion chief to head us up. And they have been a big need, and we've been able to fulfill that and be able to assist our arson division in, as you'll see, having a 60% increase in total fire investigations, along with a 43% increase in arson-related fire investigations. They have been busy and nonstop. We have created even a shift work where they continually are working around the clock to continue the investigation efforts within the city of Bakersfield, and it's paid dividends to make sure that arson-related issues are, and arrests and convictions, that we keep going with that. We make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we're constantly out there to provide that service to Bakersfield. Continuing with the arson division, we have, the fires investigated in the last year alone was 574. We had 375 of those that are incendiary fires or purposely set fires. And then we had 115 accidental with 84 undetermined. This slide will show the fire losses within 2020. We had four fire deaths, civilian deaths. We had 20 civilian fire injuries and nine firefighter injuries in the year 2020. The pie chart to the right is not usually publicized as much, and I think it should be, is being able to see that there were almost 16 million in total fire losses of the overwhelming amount of fires. But in estimation, there was 96 million in total value saved because firefighters or an aggressive attack to be able to put the fire out in an immediate fashion. Continuing with arson division, these are the arrests. And that being said, you'll see down at the far number where it says a 38% conviction rate. While a lot of times that seems low, we're actually one of the highest in the state because we aggressively pursue the arsonist and make sure that our people are out there every single day, and they're enforced. And being able to do those shift work, we have them constantly 24 hours around the clock, have an arson investigator, has shown the importance throughout the last year, and I'm proud of the efforts. proud of the efforts that they put in in our arson division. And you can see they have 24 felony convictions, 16 misdemeanor arrests, and they have 23 pending. And a lot of that has lowered the number just because of COVID and how the courts have slowed down at this point. Now, right now, we'll transition to the Bakersfield Fire Department goals for 2021, '22. We're looking at a BFD recruit academy in next February, most likely be a large academy. We're looking at anywhere from 25 to 30. And also, we continue to maintain our joint training facility with Kern County Fire and continue to train at that facility, which is an invaluable facility for us to train at. We plan to conduct promotional exams for both captain and engineer's positions, and what's important to me is firefighter wellness. We have Cortico app, we have At Ease program. We've really reached out to assist firefighters and their families through these certain times. In these uncertain times, especially with COVID, it has been a year that has taken a toll on our firefighters. And with the overwhelming call volume, wellness has been important to me to keep our firefighters safe and healthy. Also, we continue to, our joint training with both, with the Bakersfield Police Department and our arson units coming together, and also the hazmat and the rescue end of it, because you do have bomb squad and other ways we can assist PD with it. And it's good for us to continue to work together with Chief Terry and his troops. Goals in the administrative services area, we're looking at the Center for Public Safety Excellence. This is, you've heard us say this before, and accreditation we've been looking towards to make us more effective and more efficient. We're seeing areas where we can improve as a fire department. And this has allowed us to get together that five-year plan that I explained, that strategic plan that was so important to me, and now I know how important it is to the department, and I know it's important to council and the taxpayer to see us, the fire department progress as we have. And this strategic plan has set out those five-year goals for us to achieve that. And it's optimized this department in so many ways, and as I stated, the effectiveness and efficiency, and how this accreditation has got us to the point where we are and seen where we can better ourselves, best practices throughout the nation and the state. And that's why it's important, all my deputy fire chiefs, when they come on, they have to be on a state board, because by being on that state board, you see what other departments are doing and how to incorporate best practices. And we will continue to do that so we can progress Bakersfield and the Bakersfield Fire At this point, I'd like to introduce Chief Frando. He will be discussing grant funding, planning, and also capital outlay issues.
The Bakersfield Fire Department recognizes that there are limited funds, whether it comes to, comes to a general fund or PSVS. We know that there's limited funds available that need to be dispersed throughout the city and other departments. As a result, the fire department is always searching for grants that will help us obtain equipment that's necessary to complete our mission. A lot of the equipment that we utilize in the fire department is very expensive and hard to get. Some of the items that we were able to obtain, one of the items is a hazardous materials monitor, more specific to weapons of mass destruction, or WMD, that we were able to obtain through the State Homeland Security Grant Program. A utility terrain vehicle through Cal Water Foundation for accessing victims along the foothills and urban interface, areas where they're very inaccessible by fire engine. And also, a motorized rescue boat through Firehouse Subs, which is very important to us when we're talking about river rescues along the Kern River. Should be noted that all of this equipment is accessible, available for deployment through the Master Mutual Aid Program throughout the entire state. Some of the goals for this year, we plan on maintaining our National Incident Management System and standardized emergency management system compliance. Really, when we're talking about this, we're talking clear and concise organizational structure. So whenever we're bringing multiple resources together for disaster, whether we're being deployed abroad or we're bringing agencies in to handle a disaster of our own, we need to make sure that everybody's on the same playbook, working off the same page in that playbook, really to protect lives, property, and the environment. We all need to work together to be able to mitigate disasters. But we're also looking at department exercises through our Department Operations Center on the third floor and fourth floor of our headquarters building. So we're planning on putting together a couple of disaster planning, training exercises this fall, probably leaning towards, at this point, urban search and rescue type of a rescue drill, multi-agency that we plan on conducting and bringing some of our partnering agencies together. When we're talking fire safety services, we're also talking fire prevention. It's pretty synonymous. And our goal is to reduce the amount of fires through inspections, education, and enforcement. If we can keep the fires from starting, more lives are saved and more property is saved than occurs if we have to go out and actually stop a fire from spreading, or protect or remove somebody from harm. We're also planning on implementing an electronic plan submittal and review and permitting process, which is consistent with other departments throughout the city, hopefully streamlining the permitting process and making for better customer service for the end customer. Just one example of some of the fire prevention efforts, the inspected 650 oil wells that are located throughout the city, one inspector conducted that many inspections, among other duties, for that particular inspector. Through our capital outlay fund, some of the things that we're hoping to achieve this year is the painting of several apparatus bays. Over the years, you get a lot of soot and buildup and just decades-old paint that starts to peel from the walls and leave it rather unsightly for a public facility. We're planning on painting several apparatus bays. The interior of one fire station, Fire Station Number One, which is really the central hub for public education. Most school kids, some of us in this room, have probably gone to Fire Station Number One as a kid and conducted a station tour. So we're planning on making that nice and presentable, hoping that the COVID restrictions will be lifting in the not-too-distant future, and we'll be able to welcome students back into Station One. Ballistic vest replacements. We've actually have ballistic vests that are due for their five-year replacement, and one of the questions might come up that, what do firefighters need ballistic vests for? You know, in today's times, where we have a lot of active shooter-type incidents throughout the state, one of the ways that we've planned for this type of event is with training exercises conducted with our local law enforcement, especially BPD. We actually will go into some hazardous zones inside of an active shooter incident with force protection from our PD officers, so that we can remove people from harm's way. And one of the ways that we protect ourselves is with ballistic vests and helmets. Those are due for a five-year replacement later this fall, so we're planning on replacing those vests per recommendations. Also, mobile data computers, these are truly the intel inside of our fire engines and command vehicles, where we get updates from dispatch, apparatus-to-apparatus communications, and apparatus-to-dispatch communications. Very important for us to be replacing 16 mobile data computers later this year. And also, patient care reporting tablets. We need to maintain compliance with state regulations to be able to report patient information, record patient information, transfer that patient information to the transporting agency, and eventually to the hospitals. Makes for a streamlined process, and again, we're following legislation when it comes to patient care reporting. Chief actually mentioned the Thermo Fisher Gemini and the Plimo vent systems, which are a couple of things that we're going to try to acquire through PSVS. My final slide will be regarding some of the fleet purchases, and when we're talking fleet, we're talking fire engines, fire trucks, command vehicles, things of that nature. Some of the things that we were able to achieve this past year are the replacement of two fire engines, one battalion chief vehicle, two rescue units, which Chief Ballard and Chief Gallego mentioned, were approved through the Oversight Committee, and those are the two rescues that are at Stations 2 and Station 6. That program was actually launched in July. We're also pleased to have gotten two air compressor units for our self-contained breathing apparatus, so that we can get our rigs back in service after refilling our self-contained breathing apparatus bottles after a fire, and one ladder truck, which is actually in the building stages right now. Our goals for the future year of '21, '22 is for one fire engine replacement, one light and air unit, which is housed at Fire Station Number One, and one breathing air compressor unit also at Fire Station Number One. I'd like to turn this back over to Chief Gallego.
We're almost there. All right, one program we're pretty proud of is our Bakersfield Reserve firefighters, and they are trained EMTs and also have been through Firefighter 1. We currently have 15 reserve firefighters, and we try to build them up in that way to become a local talent that might work for Bakersfield. A lot of them go to other departments, but a lot of them want to stay here in Bakersfield. So we continually recruit for that out of the Firefighter 1 Academy, local high schools, through the college, and start early through recruitment and keep our local talent, if we possibly can here. And through that being through the Explorer program, you'll see in the next slide, but this is where they're truly trained. They get the mandated state training, and they also help us in all community service projects, and also through our local nonprofits. That being said, that we have our Fire Explorer program, and up here, it says it's anywhere from the ages of 15 to 21. Generally, by the time they're about 19 or 20, they're within our reserve program, and we've gotten them through the Fire Explorer program at that time. This is more of a ride-along. This is to see if it's something they really want to do, and we can get them in that Explorer program that is sanctioned under the Boy Scouts of America, and it's a good partnership. That being said, the community service area is very important to me, this, how we focus on public education, how we reach out to the public in the information that we provide them about their fire department, how critical that is, and reaching out to specific groups and risk groups within the area, we're doing that. And through community risk reduction, by reaching out and through public service announcements, which you will see in the next week or two that's coming out, where we're reaching out through Telemundo, also through different agencies to be able, media agencies, to be able to recruit within Bakersfield, start at a young age, not, not start when they're out of college, they don't know exactly where that, we're with them, and we're at BC, and we're constantly doing that. But we want to make sure, whether they're in junior high, they're in high school, we're reaching out to them. And I don't, if it's through Zoom, we would love to do it in person, because the COVID has restricted that to a degree. We're starting to get out where we can actually do demonstrations from afar, but at the same time, we're still going to do this. And that was a mission of mine coming in, is we will reach the youth, we will reach it, and make sure that this, because it's interesting enough, when you preach that safety message to the children, it gets to the parents. And so we've been doing that on an active basis and reaching out to the schools and seeing what their needs are. And by doing that, I believe it's only helped Bakersfield Fire Department, and it also helps the citizens of Bakersfield to keep them safe. We have, as it says, a collaborative interagency, media, and community interface, and we continue to do that, whether through social media means, through Zoom, through actually getting FaceTime with people, because that's important to us. It's important to me that we continue to put the public education, just because of COVID, there are other ways for us to do that, and we will be dogged in getting those things done. And of course, this is our legendary customer service. I wanted to end it on a feel-good, and so for dog and cat lovers, here we go, there's your rescues. And this is what we're about. The Bakersfield Fire Department is about providing legendary customer service. And we're here, we're here for the city council, but we're here for Bakersfield. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments, and all of us are available.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, no real questions today, but just want to express my gratitude to you and to the entire department for all the work that you do day in and day out. And for this presentation, I'm really pleased to see the rescue squads in place, and the numbers are compelling, and it's interesting to see those, and I just appreciate, again, all the work. And please convey our appreciation to all of the folks within the fire department.
Absolutely.
And to that note, I'm really happy that you are looking at the firefighter wellness app and continue to look for ways to respond to the needs of the folks who are in the fire department. They are, they are the ones who are responding to Bakersfield citizens when they are in a crisis, and it's important that we take care of them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I just want to say thank you. What a pleasure to finally meet you. I haven't met you before, sir, so thank you for being here. I've had my own personal encounters with the Bakersfield Fire Department, with aging parents, and I want to tell you, your men really represent you well, very well. I was so extremely impressed with the few times that I've had to have them come in that I was just like, wow, these guys are first class. So you're doing a great job on your training. What I was really pleased, being more conservative when it comes to the financial impact of what it makes on the taxpayer, is that you all are within that, well, you're lower than that average budget. So for the amount of stations that we have and the amount of money we're spending, I was very pleased to see that we weren't the most expensive in the state of California. So good job on managing that and good job over here. So anyway, I'm just grateful for what we have here in Bakersfield.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
Thanks, Chief. Great presentation.
I've just had two questions. When you are seeking grants, who helps you with that? I mean, do you just have someone internally, or are there consultants that are specialized? But that seems to be such an important function, is identifying grants that can help us. I just wondered, you know, how do you find these grants?
Well, interestingly enough, we'll find them through the likes of council. We'll find them through the Congressman McCarthy's office, Assemblymember Salos. We'll find them through, they're shown to us, but I have two very experienced deputy chiefs, and Chief Ballard and Chief Albertson, who have sought out grants for many, many years, even at the, lower at the company officer level, because we believe in succession, and you have to seek those things out to better our department, because if we can get, the example is Firehouse Subs giving us a fireboat to better assist in swift water rescue on the river, on the lakes. And we continually seek that out, and through our state agencies, because all of us are involved on a state board. I'm the Southern Director of Cal Chiefs, I'm on the League of Cities as Vice President, because we will get that information, and we make sure that we're out there and with the pulse of other departments, and they will disseminate a lot of that information. So it's actually quite easy for us now that we've branched out the way we have.
Okay. That seems to be a vital function. I'm not sure every department has the resources to, knowledge to actually do that, and then they miss out on grants.
Yes.
The other is, I appreciate the charts you give us. They give us some perspective of ourself versus other cities. It's really hard for us to sit up here and know, do we have too many people, too few people, without reference to peer cities. It's really impossible for us to evaluate almost any of the departments in the city. So I appreciate that, and for Christian, I would encourage you in all of the budget presentations to, maybe we can't get them this year, but by mid-year next year, for everyone to have a series of charts and measurements of us against our peer cities, you know, how many per thousand employees, how many per this, the key measurements that help us know. And I would go into the departments, too, if it's available, I don't know, but it'd be nice to know, you know, how many of this level of firemen, this level of police versus this level, this little administration. It helps, the more information we have, the more it helps us say, oh, okay, actually, we have less administration, or we have more, but we don't really know. And so, and I don't think the public knows. We get a lot of criticism on, ah, look, you increased them 6% again. Well, we honestly don't know if we started too low or started too high, because we don't have that expertise. And the more you can give us charts in detail in every department of peer cities, you know, pick the Big Nine or whatever, that's incredibly helpful to people up here who have to evaluate. So I just pass that on. I appreciate the ones you gave us, and to Christian, if we can get that for everybody, because it ends a lot of discussion and criticism when you get the information. And so that's really just all I have to say on that. Thanks.
And Councilmember Freeman, to that, I'm sorry, Honorable Counsel, anytime that one of you individually wants to come by, we have slide presentations, be able to get in the nuts and bolts. Whenever you'd like to come by, it's, we're open, and we'll set up the time and be able to show that to you in our conference room.
And just in reflection through the chair on Councilmember Freeman's comments, we did see quite a few of those measures in our presentations to Oversight Committee, and so you'll see some of those comparisons. I think it probably will not be in every department's case, but that's a good suggestion, and so we'll include more of that. But there will be- But there will be several of those comparisons and per capita comparisons in the presentations you'll see this cycle. And then on the grant perspective, one of the roles of one of the assignments that we were going to assign for adding assistant to the city managers and the city manager's offices to do grants coordination, so that we can make sure that we're filtering all the different opportunities, getting them out to the departments. We don't intend to apply for all those grants out of our office, because there's technical expertise that some of the departments need. But we are looking at having a more coordinated grants filtering and application process and looking at outside resources as well that can help us in the grant writing process. And then just lastly, to Chief's last comment, we actually had some members of the Oversight Committee in this last year do some site tours with the fire department, and it really changed perspectives about the work that the fire department does and even some of our facilities and some of the needs that we've been communicating that are out there. And so, yeah, we welcome some of those site visits are really informative.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Good work, as usual. I had a question on the, I think the number was 35% of structural fires are vacant. Is that number going up, down?
General going up, yes, sir.
And a lot of times it's repetitive, same structure gets burned multiple times.
Yes, we've had some burn, what, half dozen times? So, yeah, depending.
Yeah, I know, I know we've had referrals about what we can do with those, but I would just like to take this opportunity to say, you know, we we do need to move forward, whether, you know, those structures need to be bought by the city, demolished. They are a continuing cost and burden upon the city in many ways. So I just take this opportunity to reinforce that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Chief Gallegoza, Frando, Ballard, and Albertson, thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you.
We've talked about how well you do the comparable peer cities, and that information really is helpful. You had mentioned that there was this major increase over the last 10 years in fire suppression. We really saw that big jump. How did that compare with the number of staff that you had over this 10 years?
Well, the number of staff that we do have in in 2010 and around then, between 2012, we did lose personnel. We lost the light engines, they're more of a brush brush rig for grass fires, rescues, things like that. And we did lose two of those. We gained two back in PSVS. We lost some additional positions, but then we gained back the rescue. So we've stayed probably within, we've probably gained maybe five to six positions since that time, which is not enough, obviously, in the sense that we have we have more than 150% of where we're going with our call volume. But the last station that we constructed was in 2014, was Station 14 in 2009, and that's the last station we've had. And we've gone from 27,000 calls to almost 47,000 calls, so.
A major increase of explosions and EMS and incidents. So thank you very much for covering that with limited personnel. You had highlighted the Center for Public Safety Excellence, and we're working towards some kind of accreditation. What does it take to get us to where you want to be?
Well, that's a national accreditation process, and that that basically, while it will indicate the needs of what we need as far as additional fire stations, additional personnel, which if you go through a city gate or where we're at, you're looking at seven fire stations, and we knew that that was an impossibility at this point in time, and we needed to take care of what was important now. And it was our EMS calls and also firefighter safety. That's why we integrated the rescue program. And noticing that the call volume is increasing in the Northwest, and when Council Councilman Smith's ward is far as where Station 65 is, as far as the county station, that's now 82% population city and 87% in landmass. And looking towards growing Bakersfield and making sure that the business of firefighting is keeping our firefighters safe and keeping the public safe, and it is allowing us to be more effective and efficient in saying to send apparatus to a certain incident, to not send this, but it's also for community risk reduction, how we can prevent before fires happen. And that's important to us also. It's not just about firefighters going to calls, it's about preventing those calls from even happening. So we're working twofold with this accreditation, and it's given us a lot of, it's a national accreditation, because it makes you that much better as a fire department, and also it gives you the nation, national perspective along with the state.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Colleagues, I don't see any other requests to speak. And so now, thank you to all of you, appreciate you. And City Clerk, the next group, please.
The next presentation is from the Police Department.
Thank you. Mr. Clug, do you wish to make any comments before?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll introduce Chief Terry.
Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Greg Terry, Police Chief. And I'll be presenting our proposed our proposed budget for next year. Our mission is to partner with our community and solve the significant public safety challenges that we're facing, while being guided by our values of compassion, accountability, and professionalism. I'm going to show you a short video this time, kicking off our budget presentation, to really reflect a representation of the incidents that occur in our city every day. What you're going to see is not the unusual. You're going to see a reflection of what occurs in our community daily and some of the challenges that we're facing as a community. It is very emotional to watch, I will tell you that. And then I'll proceed with the presentation following that.
Saturday night, Bakersfield Police were called to another deadly shooting. According to Bakersfield Police Sergeant Robert Pear, about 500 people were in that neighborhood when police showed up. At one point, an officer was struck in the face with a glass bottle that was thrown at him. That suspect was arrested, but the night didn't end there.
He rolled my foot over. She's saying there was a gun in the house.
Come on, man, think about your daughter. You really want to hurt yourself when your daughter's depending on you? I have a daughter, too, man. I know how it is.
Bakersfield Police Department has arrested a 28-year-old man after he allegedly assaulted an 85-year-old woman.
Okay, all right. So we're going to put you on the telephone, okay?
So Police Department responded to the 700 block of East California Avenue for a shot spotter activation. When officers arrived, they found two men suffering from gunshot wounds.
The police have arrested two suspects accused in a deadly shooting, but now it's the gun they are looking for. That shooting happened Wednesday night on Whitegate Avenue and Acres Road in South Bakersfield.
Yeah, we need to get her away from the fire.
I got that, get her, huh?
Okay, ready? It's in our work, honey. All right?
This video is not shown to sensationalize events in our community. It was shown to educate and raise the awareness of incidents that occur in our community daily. It's also not intended to create fear or a sense of hopelessness, because there's no need for that. The men and women of the Bakersfield Police Department continue to stand ready to protect and provide the service to our community. And the resources in this proposed budget will help us do that. We are a growing community, and I believe the most effective way for us to improve public safety for everyone is for us to partner with our community, and we intend to do that. The first several slides of the presentation will be a review of crime, reported crime in our city, an update on response times and staffing. Part one crimes are specific types of crimes that are reported to the FBI on a monthly basis. They are categorized as violent and property crimes. These reflect the actual number of reports to the Police Department for each of these types of crime. As you can see, the total number of reported part one crimes in 2020 was slightly lower than it was in 2019. This slide reflects the same category of part one crimes, but it separates them with violent and property crimes. Unfortunately, last year in 2020, we had a record level of homicides that occurred in our city with the number of 45, 45 people being murdered in our city. Last year across the country, there was significant increases in homicides. In fact, 63 of the largest 66 cities in the United States saw at least a 33% increase in homicides. We also saw a significant increase in aggravated assaults. Those are felony assaults with weapons or involve significant injuries. The total number of sexual assaults and robberies, though, fell slightly. It's sometimes easy to view and discuss these statistics in a clinical way, but these numbers represent individuals and families that were impacted by crime in our community last year. This slide and the one next will provide a historical look at both the violent and property crime over about a 20-year period. As you can see, the violent crime rate per thousand has stayed relatively steady since 2013. It dipped slightly in 2019 and went back to five per thousand in 2020. The property crime rate per thousand at 40 in 2020 is actually the lowest since 2001. One obvious contributing factor, unique thing about last year was that most of us were home, the world was a lot different. And so we think that that probably significantly impacted that that crime rate. We have six police patrol zones in our city, three on the east side of 99 and three on the west side. Those on the east side, starting at the north, are hill, metro, and valley. On the left side is north, central, and south. I show you that to have some perspective on our response times. These are the citywide response times in each of those patrol zones for 2020 as compared to the same time period in 2019. As you can see, across each of the patrol zones, our response times in 2020 were above, were higher than they were in 2019. Our zones of central and metro have the highest call volume, but they also have the highest number of officers and resources deployed to them. The black line there represents the median average of both of the two years and represents about a six-minute and 45-second average response time across the city. Staff and our community partners continue to do a great job in the increasing the live release rates from our animal control shelter. As you can see, it's a continual increase over the last five years. This reflects our authorized complement and vacancies as of today. When we started this fiscal year, we started with 410 filled positions. We currently have netted an increase of 19 so far this year. We currently stand at 429 filled positions. A priority is and continues to be the hiring of 100 officers over a three-year period. But it's important to keep this in the context about how we're going about doing this. With the implementation of the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure in July of 2019, we began the work of trying to build the infrastructure and the ability to increase that staffing, and we have been diligently working on and to do that, while at the same time ensuring that we're not sacrificing the standards and ensuring that the people who come on and serve as a Bakersfield Police Officer have the right characteristics and traits and the heart for service and can fulfill the expectations that our community has. The Police Department and and staff and human resource staff in particular have worked tirelessly to make this process better and to improve this process so that we can reach our goals of doing this. They've worked very hard to build and refine different processes. Some of those processes include streamlined testing processes, recruitment bonuses, candidate engagement, advertising, and a dedicated website, among very among many others. And I'm very confident with what is now in place, that we will be seeing the the positive impact of all of that work over the last year and a half. And I think we're going to make some significant progress the rest of this year and in next fiscal year. One of the new things coming will be the Join BPD, so Join BPD, which is a dedicated recruitment website, and that should be launching here very soon. This is an update on the academy so far this fiscal year. We had 14 graduate in December of 2020, and we anticipate 26 graduating this next June, next month. And our goal is to hire 10 academy graduate laterals this fiscal year, and we should be able to do that or exceed it, actually. We have two academies that will be planned for, are being planned for this next fiscal year, one beginning in July and the next one being in in January. And we both, we are planning and anticipating that each of those classes will have between 46 and 50 trainees in each of them. And again, with the streamlined processes and the various other things that we're working with HR about, I think that we're going to easily accomplish the hiring of at least 20 academy academy graduates and laterals this next year. Community outreach and engagement was very different last year. As you can imagine, the world was different, but we found ways to be accessible to our community and to ensure that we are engaging and continuing in community education. Social media continues to be a strong resource for us to be transparent and to engage with our community as well. This next year's budget, and I'll get into that now, is really a reflection of our work to attempt to accomplish these city council priorities. Police Department operations have been carefully considered and reviewed to produce a budget that responds to the most pressing needs of the community and the expectations of our community as well. The total proposed appropriations there is listed there. It reflects an increase of about 11% over this current fiscal year. That 11% includes some grant funding as well. Significant impacts in the salaries and benefits area in particular are due to the fact that 49% of the BPD staff have not yet reached are still in the promotional or merit raise phase, what is below step five is what we would call it. So that has significant impact on the salaries and benefits area this year. These are the resources that will fund this next budget. There was an increase in about just over a 2% increase in the general fund budget. Our discretionary and operating budget remains flat as compared to this current fiscal year. These are examples of the grant funding that will be that we will be utilizing this year. They are, all of them are ones that we have consistently received over the last several years. In particular, the one in the upper right-hand corner, the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund, we are going to be utilizing that to supplement some of the training and equipment that we perhaps would have put into the general fund budget this year. But in order to keep, again, that operating budget flat, we are balancing between the general fund and this fund to make sure that we are meeting the training and equipment needs of our staff. Obviously, there are a lot of changes coming due to legislative standards or legislative changes, industry standards, and community expectations. So we want to make sure that we're able to adequately supply and train our personnel. This is the department's organizational chart. Last year was a significant reorganization with the addition of some new positions, but there are no additional positions that require the restructuring of the organization at this point. Some of the things that are coming in this next fiscal year is the development of a three- to five-year strategic plan. A strategic plan is the roadmap to move from where we are today to where we want to be in the future. A plan will enhance our efforts to be good stewards of community resources and identify intentional ways for us to work together and partner with our community and help build a better department. There are significant resources that are obviously devoted to public safety. We want to make sure that we have a good plan to use that and to grow the organization into the future. Second thing that we're very excited about is a youth diversion program. We actually tried to and wanted to kick this off in this current year, but weren't able to do that due to COVID. But youth diversion is an intervention strategy that provides an alternative to formal processing in the juvenile justice system. It utilizes principles of restorative justice, and the focus of the program would be to help youth repair the harm caused by criminal behavior and create opportunities for them to take responsibility for their actions, learn from their mistakes, and make better decisions in the future. A program like this will be a partnership between the police department, the community, high school district, the district attorney office, and the courts. And the goals of this program will be to lower youth recidivism rates with increased support for changes in their behavior, their attitudes toward authority, and increased knowledge of the justice system. As we continue to implement community policing and problem-solving philosophy across the department, we are going to make some changes with our patrol officer deployment. Obviously, we just discussed response times, and it is unacceptable that we are taking as long as we are to get to the highest priority calls. In particular, over the last several months, we have done a lot of work to analyze how we're deploying it. And so in July, we're going to be moving from six patrol shifts to five. This will enable us to increase the patrol staffing across each of the five shifts as well as to add some additional positions to our impact team to traffic into the special enforcement unit. And we believe that this will have a positive impact on our response times. In addition to this, in particular, coming in July at shift change, officers will be assigned to the geographic area for a year. This has not previously been done, but we want to do this so that the officers can be in a better position to get acquainted with and learn and hear from our community residents about their needs and their concerns in their particular area. And by maintaining stable personnel or the same personnel within many of these geographic patrol zones, we're going to be better positioned to do that. We will also continue to find ways to find solutions to the current and chronic issues that are facing our community through collaborations and partnerships, and we'll continue to work on gang and gun violence, street racing, mental health responses, and building trust in law enforcement. Lastly, we're going to continue to focus on wellness programs. Employee wellness and resiliency are part of our overall strategy to have an employee-centered culture. Law enforcement officers, dispatchers, and other public safety personnel are tasked with handling the most high-risk events and dangerous events that occur in our community on a daily basis. I'm so proud of the men and women who serve our community every day, and we're going to work to ensure that we're providing them and their families the resources necessary to allow them to continue to do so. The next several slides will be the new positions request for this next year. The first is 28 police officer positions. There's the breakdown of them, nine police officers, eight seniors, six detectives, and five sergeants. The patrol officers and senior officers will be assigned to patrol to help provide with some line supervision, some oversight, and some efficiency as well. The detectives will allow us to reassign cases that we've not been able to previously do due to staffing shortages. In that particular, we'll be focused on property crimes, financial crimes, and then we'll be able to more effectively address and assign cold case homicides. The complexity and scope of PD fiscal services continues to evolve with staff increases across the departments and regulatory changes and funding sources. These new positions will provide support for grant management and allow, increase our capacity to acquire and manage more grants. The Quality Assurance Unit supports the department by providing data and audits and inspections, early intervention, and a variety of other systems across the organization. As we work to take a proactive look at organizational management, they're also responsible for producing materials that we use for transparency. Some additional staff positions is occurring within the Investigations Division. The addition of one laboratory tech. This will provide, several of these will provide permanent staffing into each of these specialized areas with a significant impact to returning people, both officers and police service technicians to the field to perform their primary duties. With the lab tech into the crime scene unit, this will specifically return a police service technician to the field. The digital forensic unit, which is responsible for all of the processing of the computers and the different digital devices, dedicating a forensic or hiring a dedicated digital examiner here will return a police sergeant to patrol. Currently, in the court complaint unit, those are the individuals that are responsible on a daily basis to take the investigative reports and file them with the district attorney's office. Hiring two clerk typists to be able to do this will allow us to return police service technicians to more field-related duties that they were initially designed for. The additional staffing within the records unit, this will help provide continuity and stable staffing across all of the shifts. And the same for our communications center. We have six shifts in the communications center, and we are in need of one additional supervisor to ensure that each shift has a supervisor assigned to it. The next several positions are within the police records unit. We have seen a significant increase in the number of public records requests. Last year, there were over 13,000 requests last year, and that's only going to continue to increase, the volume of them and the nature of them as well. Additionally, the legislation is changing, that has impacted that, but also the organization is growing, so there are more records, and specifically the body worn camera. That is a significant impact to and involves many of the public records requests. And just for some orientation, each of the public records requests specifically with a body worn camera, that footage has to be viewed in real time and then either revised or redacted, and it takes about three to four hours for every one hour of real time. The Technology Development Unit, they are the ones that are continuing to look for better solutions utilizing technology and to develop and manage our technology systems. Right now, a police officer is fulfilling this role. With the addition of one police property and equipment specialist, this will allow us to return a patrol officer to the field. Temporary positions, retired annuance. We have not previously utilized these positions in a significant way, but while we are obviously hard at work with recruitments, we are looking for ways to assess the different options we might be to utilize these extra help positions. Many of our retirees have some specialized working knowledge that allow them to come in and do short-term projects or intermittent projects across the department to ensure that there's continuity of services delivered to our city. And at the same time, many of these, it will allow some of our staff to fulfill their primary duties and not have to do as many collateral duties, which obviously has a significant impact on efficiency. These are examples of some of the positions that we are assessing and would like to use in this next year. What's unique about these positions in particular, they are at-will. They receive no benefits, and they are limited to 960 hours in a fiscal year. Listed below, there are some examples of the ways that we might use them. An academy director, for instance, would allow the lieutenant that currently works in the training division to focus full-time on the training responsibilities across the organization and allow an annuance to be the academy director, which is basically the liaison with post and does a lot of that coordination. The academy coordinator is more of the day-to-day. It's currently fulfilled, that role is being fulfilled by a police sergeant. And if we were able to acquire an academy coordinator, we would be able to return that police officer to the field or that police sergeant back to the field. We did, I think, almost 500 or just over 500 background investigations across the department last year, and obviously that we are continuing to do a lot of those. And so we will be assessing and bringing on more of annuance to do our background investigations so that this does not have to be a collateral duty by many detectives and senior officers in the department. And again, they can focus on their primary responsibilities. Having additional annuance within the Quality Assurance Unit and Traffic Unit, again, will allow us to take a more active approach as to how we're performing within the organization and utilize our personnel in a much more efficient way. In particular, in the Traffic Unit, it will allow officers to be out of the office and back on the street doing speed enforcement. The last slide is some new equipment this year, 30 police patrol vehicles, four motorcycles. This will continue the restoration of our motorcycle unit, and this will bring us to a total of 12 if we are able to obtain these four motorcycles this year. And we are in need of one additional police service technician truck. Due to our plan to return many of these police service technicians to the field, we are in need of an additional truck for them to be able to drive. And I'll have one last closing video and then some comments, and then I'll be ready for any questions.
I noticed that your sign right there says, "Help, please help." I'm here to help, okay? If you're willing to get off the streets or wanting to get off the streets, butt man, she's gonna make that happen. We can get you into the navigation center.
Compassion.
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 Accountability.
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 Professionalism.
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 This is my Bakersfield PD.
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 Our mission and responsibility is to provide for the public safety services of our community, and we are committed to doing that with the highest levels of professionalism. But it certainly doesn't mean that we decide for the community what their needs and concerns are. And we are committed to partnering with them in a much stronger and more effective way. Because I believe the community has a right to expect that they have some input into how we are delivering our services. But I also believe that there should be a shared responsibility by the community as well in helping us address the public safety issues that we have. We're not perfect by any means, but we are committed to being a learning organization, always seeking to improve and change for the better for everyone. And if you indulge me just one last moment, this week is Police Week. It's a week set aside to recognize and honor the sacrifice of law enforcement officers who have been killed in the line of duty. And we'll be having some ceremonies this week, and we'll be sharing some details of that shortly. But I am so proud and thankful, grateful for the men and women who continue to serve under what is at times very difficult circumstances. So I just wanted to say that. But with that, I'll open up for any questions, and my dedicated staff here, well, I'm sure, will have all the answers if I don't have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Terry. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation today. And I also want to thank you for all the work you've done and many folks in your department have done to serve and work with the Community Collaborative, the presentation that we heard last week, and all the folks who participated in that. Thank you for, again, the work, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the fruits of that labor. I want to jump right into the Partie One Calls for Service. It is concerning to see the increase, particularly when you look at valley. If I'm reading the chart right, if we can pull it up, please. From 2019 to 2020, we see an increase in the response time at about a minute and 14 seconds. Chief, can you tell us what's going on here? Is this just a function of the volume of calls for service? And what are we doing to respond to that increase as it's a disparity between other zones?
So, you know, I don't have with me the breakdown of the number of calls within each zone, so that certainly could be a factor in it. 2020 was unlike any other year that we'd ever done. We had to, on at least one occasion, move to some emergency staffing to fill shortages, to ensure that we, and we had to implement significant prevention, infection prevention controls. We had to reduce and eliminate for a large, for quite some time. We no longer had two-man cars, and so we had individuals that were driving alone in each of the cars. So that impacted our response times because now two vehicles had to drive to a location, deal with all the other traffic versus two officers being in a car. So there were significant things like that that impacted 2020 in particular. As I've mentioned earlier, we've, over the last several months, we recognized this. Right now, about 50% of the time, we can get to a Priority One response time in under seven minutes. We're not satisfied with that, nor should anyone. And so over the last several months in particular, we've been looking at the response times and discussing ways that we could impact this. And that, one of the solutions that we've come up with is the reduction in our patrol staff from six shifts to five. And this will increase the number across each of the shifts as well as allow us to increase some staffing in traffic and in impact in particular that might deal with some of these long-term chronic issues that are impacting our response times by ways that we can't resolve or find solutions to incidents. And so we're repeatedly going to different events. One of the ideas about the geographic deployment with patrol officers and placing them in these patrol zones for a longer period of time is so that they can personally become familiar with the issues that are facing those particular areas of the city, such as the valley zone, and they can work and have direct contact with the residents there rather than having officers rotate through those areas every six months. And so those are some of the things that I think are behind the increase in the response time and some of the things that we're doing to address it.
Okay, I appreciate that, Chief. I'm going to drill down just a little bit more if you want to, if you indulge me. Because it is concerning to me, it kind of sticks out. If you look at the north zone, the increased response time was five seconds, and central is 21 seconds. I'm just doing a cursory count, please correct me if I'm wrong here. South is 14 seconds, hill 31, metro 36. But then we get to valley, and it's over a minute increase. And so again, I'd just like us to kind of dig in a little deeper and better understand how we can respond to that, to that particular zone.
I can do that.
Thank you, sir. Other question is, in previous years, I could be mistaken, but I believe we received response times for lower priority calls, and I wonder if we can get that data as well.
Yes.
I'd like to see that. You know, we've heard a lot from the community and various different stakeholders, and I think there's a lot of value in understanding better how we're differentiating our responses. You know, there's certain lower priority calls for service that don't necessarily require a police officer to respond. Can you share with the council, with the community right now, some of the initial work that the department is doing and some of the future ideas and plans?
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, we have tried to find ways for more effective and efficient use of our resources while at the same time making sure that we have a good service model for the public. And so... And so, we've created several years ago, after the IACP recommendations, we created the Telephone Reporting Unit, which was, up until this last year, was staffed with either officers who, or staff that was injured, or we were taking PSTs off the field, out of the field and staffing the Telephone Reporting Unit with them. With some of the additional positions in this current fiscal year, we were able to return PSTs to the field, and now we have a full-time dedicated staff in the Telephone Reporting Unit. So Telephone Reporting Unit is one way. We've used online report-taking as well, online access. But we've also tried to find other ways through the addressing of long-term chronic issues, trying to find collaborations and partnerships in across the community that can help us deal and resolve issues so that police responses aren't required. Impact, the Impact Team has been a significant effort to do just that, to both find ways for the public to get issues resolved and us to be able to have a better response to our community. Coming this next year in May, I'm sorry, next, this month, I keep saying it's next month, this month, our hope is that we will kick off the partnership with Kern Behavioral Health and have a differential response within our communication center to those individuals or those community members who are experiencing a, some sort of mental health crisis and have direct access and involvement with behavioral health to reduce the need for police officers to have to respond to this unless there is a life-threatening situation. And this also is another way that we're trying to address this as well. So those are the three or four primary ways that we've been trying to be, work to be accessible to the public.
Thank you. Earlier in the year, we learned that Metro Bakersfield is ranks number two in the nation for pedestrian deaths. This came up in a Legend Lit Committee meeting, colleagues just a few weeks ago, when Councilmember Parlier actually made a referral and it moved through the, through the committee to double the number of motorcycle, motorcycles from four to eight in this fiscal year. And so, Chief, maybe this is a question for you, or perhaps it is for, for Mr. Clegg, where are we on that in this kind of budget process?
Councilmember, we've taken a look at that recommendation, and I think we're prepared to move in that direction. I think, of course, and then it's subject to confirmation by the council through the budget process, but we have a number of vehicle replacements that are scheduled through this regular, you know, fleet cycle of vehicle replacements, and there are some opportunities to consider replacements for motors as opposed to, you know, patrol cars to meet that recommendation of the council, or of the committee, excuse me, but wanted to confirm that through the budget process.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is more broad. We know that in order to create safer neighborhoods, we cannot rely on the police department alone. Police Department is necessary, but it's not sufficient. And so, again, to Mr. Clegg and perhaps Chief, if you want to chime in as well, if, if you can describe for the council and the community, what steps moving forward are we taking, are we planning to take to create more, more vibrant, safer neighborhoods throughout the city of Bakersfield?
Okay. I can tell you part of, like I said, in sort of my closing, I feel very strongly that the community has input, should have input into how we police and how we deliver our services. But there's also the other element of a shared responsibility to deal with these public safety challenges as well. So with some additional positions this last year, with the Chief's Adjutant in particular, we are positioning and creating units and personnel to specifically go out and engage the community, to hear from them what their needs and concerns are, to identify what are some of the root causes and chronic issues that are facing some of our neighborhoods. Putting officers permanently, or at least for a lengthy time, at least a year, into these neighborhoods will help better identify what the community's needs and concerns are as well. And so we're going to continue to do those kinds of things to be accessible, to be sharing information and to better understand what our needs, community's needs and concerns are, and find proactive, realistic, relevant, and intentional ways to build partnerships and engage the community to exactly do just that. Not only to solve the issue, to get down to the root cause, because there are many issues that are facing public safety that the police department doesn't need to be involved in. We don't have the ability or the resources to impact the root causes. And so, but there are many things that we can, and certainly with their other community partners can do that. And so we're going to be looking to identify what some of these root causes are and chronic issues across our city, diving into what they are and then going intentionally, trying to be intentional about building partnerships across the city to do that and to solve them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and if I may also follow up on that same topic, that is a, I would suggest a, a big topic that is multifaceted, as it should be, because really at the heart of, you know, any platform that we build for community success or services that we provide, it's for the community but also needs to be community sourced and I think community-owned. Otherwise, it will, it will always be less than it could be. So a couple of specific thoughts around that, and then maybe to just signal some of my thinking about how we move forward in coming years, because I think it's something that takes time to really build that out in, in multiple aspects. One, in addition to some of the community engagement efforts of the police department, we have our new Chief Adjutant who's leading a community engagement unit. I mean, that's something that's only happened in the last few years. That's good news, I think, for policing in Bakersfield. In addition to that, we are adding some positions in our Economic and Community Development Department. One of those positions will specifically be, have the role of working with community groups in their efforts to do community revitalization and community transformation. And so I think to get at some of the, the underlying challenges that Chief is talking about, the city does not have all of the jurisdiction or all of the resources to address some of those challenges, and we need to be working with school districts, the county, with nonprofits, faith-based, and I'm trying to create at least one role, although it could probably be a team, but we're trying to be lean again, but we're creating this one role who will be responsible to facilitate some of those connections and some of those conversations about how do we work together towards collective impact instead of just, you know, the city providing services. I think beyond that, as the police department moves forward, we've talked about what does increasing community engagement look like, and also just what does community policing look like? For example, sometimes there's a conversation about facilities and substations. Is it more important to build places for police to be, or is it more important to have police officers in neighborhoods, in their patrol cars, and more importantly, out of their patrol cars? And having the actual staffing numbers that we can have police proactively out in neighborhoods, talking with neighbors and interacting with people, because when you create those relationships, then it changes how you can actually create safety without having to just be racing from call to call.
Mr. Clegg, let me just clarify. When you, when you're saying, "Go out to the communities and be proactive," you're not suggesting proactive enforcement or policing. You're, you're talking about community collaboration, building relationships with people before incidents occur.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate that clarification. That is what I mean. It means, you know, picking up a basketball and shooting a couple of hoops with kids in the park. That is positive. That, that leads to better outcomes, and, you know, we know time is valuable, but those, I think, pay dividends in the long run, being proactive and building relationships and engaging with the community in positive ways. So yes, that's, that's what I had intended. And, and then I would just reflect that, again, we've talked about 2020 being a different year, and our ability to do community engagement was, you know, hampered in many ways, although it's, we've learned a lot about how we can use technologies and use different tools to reach broader audiences, at least in that way. But Chief, Terry has, you know, been envisioning many aspects of what community engagement can look like for policing. We just haven't been able to move forward on some of those because of the pandemic and, you know, the inability to have some of those meetings and so forth, and I'm excited to see some of those initiatives and concepts, you know, be built out over this next couple of years to get that community feedback and to also engage with the community and, and have meaningful conversations. So it will grow over time, I think, both citywide and specifically in BPD, and again, look to really leverage the city's capacity and build out the capacity of many other partners along with us to get at these tough underlying issues.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias.
Chief, thank you so much for your presentation, and moreover, your, your hard work, your team's hard work, and your leadership in constant community engagement and engagement with this council on, on addressing some of the highest crimes and, and issues we see in our city. A couple of things that I want to touch base on, when it comes to kind of return on investment and some of the expenditures that we continue to make over, over the years through general budget and through PSVS, I think it's important for, you know, not only council but the general public to kind of see what is that return on investment? What are we getting for these additional investments in, in personnel, in, in whether that's, you know, patrol cars, motorcycles? What, what does that return look like? So I think that's something that is important, and if there's any additional data there, would appreciate an opportunity to take a look at that. One of the things that I saw, that I would have liked to have seen in this presentation is, what are the response times look like for cities of our size? Or maybe the better question is, for cities that experience the same level of calls, what are those response times and how do we compare? I don't know if that's available, but would love to see that. Oh, and that's the other thing is, want to appreciate all of the, the work that your team does to go after different grants to make sure that we're not just spending local taxpayer dollars, but we're doing what we can to work with our state and federal partners to bring down some of those grants to address some of the crime in the area. And I just wanted to point out and give you an opportunity to kind of talk about one of those strategic partnerships that we have right now in the community, and that's through the CalVIP grant. And so I just was hoping you could take a couple of minutes to share, where are we with that? Who are the partners that we're working with on the ground, and how does that play into BPD's effort to move forward on addressing some crime in the area?
All right, I appreciate the question, the opportunity to go back with, with regard to response times and staffing and deployment and that sort of thing. Very soon, we will be having a report done. Currently, there's a facility and staffing study that's being done, it's funded in the last, last fiscal year, and that is coming to a conclusion. And part of that study is to identify sort of, in the short-term and long-term view of what police facilities might look like and the needs might be, but it, part of that is a staffing study, looking at our workload, looking at our deployment strategy, looking at how we've staffed the, the department across the board, in every unit, in every, in every team, patrol investigations, all across the organization. And so, we're going to be better positioned to have that kind of detailed conversation about how we're growing, where do we need to grow, are we using the right deployment strategy? Hopefully, very soon, we, in the next several, probably within the next several months, we'll have that report back, and that will help inform a lot of the things that you're talking about as well. The CalVIP grant was a, a grant that was obtained last year, somewhat delayed due to COVID in the implementation of it, but it is a grant that is specifically aimed at violence reduction and specifically at reducing gang and gun violence. The grant provides funding for community partners to go out and do direct engagement. And the different, important elements of this grant program are, one, are the shooting studies, to look at where the shootings are occurring. Every week, staff will get together, review where the shootings occurred, who was involved in it, and then get with our community partners and provide some information to them about some of the circumstances around the shootings so that they can go out and directly and respectfully engage those that are either, one, are likely to be a victim of gun and gang violence, or those that might retaliate, and, and encourage them to seek alternatives to do that. So right now, our partners are the Wendell Davis Foundation, Compassion Christian, and State Focused Ministries. Those are the three grant, those are the three organizations that have, that will receive grant funding in this, in this grant.
Excellent, thank you so much. I think it's just so important, there's a lot of good work that you are doing, that your team is doing, and I think it's important that we take the time to kind of filter through that and, and make sure that we're communicating that effectively to the community. Want to segue to another really important project, and I think that's the effort of, of placing cameras throughout the city strategically, specifically in, in some of our local parks. I know there's been an increased interest among community residents to see something like that. I think just this morning, I got an email from a resident asking for that very thing to take place in, in the alley behind their house. And so, where are we with that? I know there's a pilot under the way, underway. What is the long-term strategy there?
Well, the police department is working on a couple of things, and I think Mr. Clegg might have some additional comments. But right now, we have a pilot project that we're doing with a trailer camera. It's been out at Kohl's, specifically trying to address the street racing issue. But we also have another camera system that we're looking to employ that will allow us to make them movable across the city and deploy them where we're experiencing significant events to help, again, reduce the number of offenses and the impact that those types of crimes are having on a particular area while at the same time providing good information and workable, usable evidence that we can to clear these cases and make arrests in some respects. That's sort of what the police department is doing specifically, and there'll be more of this coming over in the next several months as these pilot projects are included and reviewed.
And I would just add to that, that the Parks Department is also doing a pilot with a trailer camera that has been used at a couple of different parks in the last few weeks as we sort of identify hotspot areas that need some, some extra sort of presence visibly as well as surveillance that we can follow up on. I think your point is well-made, though, that there is sort of appetite and interest in that force multiplier of security cameras, and so we put in to the budget an additional $250,000 placeholder to do further study and pilots around the use of cameras. There's actually even additional technologies we haven't tested yet, so what we're testing right now are the trailer cameras and some, some singular mobile cameras that can be placed in multiple locations, as Chief mentioned, but there's also cameras you can place on top of light poles, and we haven't piloted that as of yet. So I, we put that placeholder in the budget so we could come back to council and make a recommendation to do a couple other pilots and perhaps even a study on, and some analysis on the most effective use of cameras. And I can see us using that increasingly into the future. I think those could represent pretty large dollars, frankly, to, to, to do that. And so, this year's allotment is really to try a few more of those creative ideas and get some assessment around it. And I just want to reflect that, you know, for, for every security camera that we put up, there's costs to the servers that receive all that information and store that information, even if it's on a short-term basis until it's reviewed and then, you know, can be, you know, erased, as well as PD time to be monitoring and looking at all of these cameras. And so I've had some conversations with Chief about if we start to really ramp that up, what is the most effective way to create? Is it a, you know, a specific camera room? Some people call these fusion centers where you're doing a lot of this monitoring, but there are some staffing and technology costs to those beyond just the cameras themselves. And so we want to do good homework in that area, but really think about it because it can be a force multiplier that is cost-effective, and so we'll be taking a hard look at that in this next year.
Fantastic, thank you. Just want to make one additional point in support of Councilmember Gonzalez's inquiry into the motorcycles and the additional increases there in motors, whether that's through purchasing singular motors to get them into existing facilities to increase that to, to eight motors throughout the city. Perfect. If we could do it in a cheaper way, that's, that's excellent, and I encourage staff to continue to, to find those more efficient ways to, to ramp that up. But I think it's, it's vitally important that we do take an aggressive approach to addressing street racing, and I think this is one of the more effective ways that we can do just that. So I just want to support that and encourage us to, to continue to do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your work. First, I just wanted to say, I also appreciate your work with the collaborative and, and having the patience to listen to community input and, and also to, to be willing to involve the community and, and make changes as needed. I appreciate that. The other thing I just want to bring up was the, the idea of using annuities. The other thing I just want to bring up was the idea of using annuities. I think that's a win-win, very economical way to add staff, experienced staff, and to get people back out on the street. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. You all are doing a great job. I did compliment the fire department on their training and what wonderful men and women they had that I've experienced, and I want to say the same thing about our police officers. Every police officer that I've met here in Bakersfield have been extremely polite, courteous, and just, you know, wonderful. So I want them to know that personally, how much they are appreciated because we need them. I want to speak on the side of the silent majority. I have constituents asking me, why aren't people coming to the city council meetings and speaking in support of the Bakersfield PD? And they're just not coming, but they are there. And there's one of many letters on our dais today and says, "Do the right thing and keep the police department funded and law and order on the streets." The majority of our citizens in this town, when I was running for election, I would ask people, "What's your biggest concern?" when I was knocking on doors, and they all said the same thing to me, "Public safety." Without public safety, people cannot pursue happiness. And that's part of our California constitution, that we should be able to pursue happiness. So I'm very grateful for the police department that we have. In the few short months that I've been serving, I've gotten a different perspective of why we don't have those 100 police officers on the street yet that PSVS promised. And I think it's a matter of perspective of the, the public is, they just don't see the hard work that the city is doing, that you're doing, to try to employ those people. Being the owner of a small business, I know how hard it is to find good people that match your code of values, that can pass your drug test and your, and your background checks. We do all that in our business. And it's very difficult to find those people that are especially committed to service as you, as your men and women are, that are putting their life on the line every time they walk out the door. My very best friend, her husband was an officer, detective, SWAT, and he gave her a gold angel one time and said, "Continue to pray for me every day, every time that I walk out the door." And she wore that. So I don't think the average person really understands what it's taking to get this police department to where we want it to be. But I think the hard work that you're doing, that the city is doing, where it's going to happen and it's going to pay off, and those, those response times are going to shorten because it's a matter of having enough personnel out there. But as far as the perspective of the police department, today, all over across the country, we're seeing a different change in perspective. And I think one of the most important things that we can do for our community, when we can pass this COVID stuff, is to get these officers into the classrooms and educate our children on the importance of public safety and build those relationships with them so that they are not afraid of police officers, but they actually realize those police officers are there to keep them safe. And by cutting back on our police department, all it's going to do is hurt the people that need us the most. So I would really encourage more of that, where we can get our officers into the schools, going down the slides, out in the community, before you all even discussed that earlier, I had that written down, to where our young people, our youth, are experiencing positive interaction with our officers by throwing the basketball and so forth, so that, so that we, this is, this is going to take some time, and we got to start with them being young. And I think when you mentioned the one-year assignments, I thought that was brilliant because then they can get to know their neighborhoods. And so I'm very much in support of our police department, and I know my constituents are, the people that I talk to, the majority of this city, and we don't hear enough from them, but those are the ones that we need to listen to. They want public safety and know that they're covered. And in fact, I just want to tell you, these are the kinds of things that can happen. Just last week, we had a customer in our business, and this woman, and you probably know the situation, I had not heard of it. Her and her husband were shot in their own home. It was an intrusion, I forget what they call it. Anyway, shot in her own home. And on the way to the hospital, he died. They got themselves in the car, got themselves to the hospital. In the hospital, he died. And she lived through it with a bullet wound going right straight through her head. And she was there to tell it to us last week. We need police officers, and we need to fund this department to take care of the men and women who serve us, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. The results of a poll that the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce took were reported last week, and they asked residents, they asked voters, "What are your top issues, your top most critical issues?" And what came back from the voters, addressing homelessness and increasing public safety. Thank you so much for all of your service. Thank you for putting yourselves out there in danger for us. The 266,196 911 calls that you took were important to someone. Chief, of those, how, just ballpark percentage, how many of those were what you would consider priority one calls and then priority two calls? And if you can just address for the public, what is a priority one versus a two or a three?
So a priority one call is the highest priority that we have, and it is when someone's life is in danger. There is an immediate need of intervention, of rescue. There were about, for 2019 and 2020, about the same number of calls, of those priority calls, about 24,000 for 2019 and 2020. The priority twos are just below that. There might have been a life-threatening event, but the person is no longer there, but it's still really unknown what might be going on. But the suspect or whoever is responsible for it is not there. And so that is sort of a characterization of, the distinction between priority one and priority two. And then we go, we have nine priorities, actually, that go all the way down. There were about, my memory serves me right, about 45,000 priority two calls last year.
And can you describe priority three also?
Let me get a tip here. Yeah, most of that, so priority threes are just occurred, what we would call just-occurred type offenses, and property-related crimes that have just occurred, such as someone just stole a car, someone just did something that is a property-type crime.
Yeah. Priority one, of course, has great urgency, and you said that we're able, for about 50% to do it within seven minutes. Priority two and three, to our constituents, are also very, very important. And those are many of the calls that we, as council members, get because our constituents are concerned at those points, because all of those have had a serious impact on them. And I'm curious, we're certainly increasing staff. What are our goals for those different priorities in terms of response times? And then how do they compare to response times of other peer cities serving about the same population?
Mayor, there's no question that when you call 911, there is some sort of an emergency that is occurring, and you need us there as quickly as possible. You heard in the, in the video there, the frightening thing and the different circumstances that are there. We recognize that getting there about 50% of the time in less than seven minutes is unacceptable. In priority two and three, you're probably talking in the realm of 10 to 15 minutes or even up to 20, 25 minutes, and longer as you go down the different response times. That's unacceptable to us, and we recognize that because the men and women of this department recognize the impact, and they see every day the impact on us getting there on time or quickly and not being there, and the effect that that has on our residents. And so that's where it goes into, like what I've talked about earlier, about really analyzing our, our deployment strategies and the way that we're staffing so that we can increase staffing levels across all the shifts while at the same time dedicating personnel who can deal with long-term chronic issues so that that call demand comes down. That's developing a partnership with, with the behavioral health to have an intervention and check the welfare calls. That's probably the highest volume of calls that we receive every day, highest percentage is check the welfare calls. And it turns out that in many of those instances, we don't have, or the police department wasn't needed, but there is no one else to go. And so we're looking and trying to build partnerships so that we can go where the emergencies are needed for police services. And so we're working hard to find all of those kinds of ways to do that because we certainly recognize that the expectation, and rightfully so, is of our community when they call 911, that we get there as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Chief. And we know that you are doing the very best that you can within the resources available, but the need far exceeds actually our ability to respond. And when somebody says, "There are 50 calls on hold," that's not an uncommon occurrence, is it? That there can be 50? What's, what could happen in an active night or even an average night of calls on hold, of people waiting for urgent situations, urgent to them and high priority to our constituents?
It's not uncommon to have 100 calls holding at night or on the weekends. Now, all of those aren't the highest level or priority because we're dealing with those as quickly as we possibly can, but even at times, by the mere fact that we can only get there about half the time in under seven minutes, that demonstrates that there are times when these priority one, highest priority calls are holding. And so, no, we, we feel the pressure and the need to do that, but it is not uncommon for those things to occur. And what a lot of people don't recognize, in my conversations with other chiefs across the state, is they don't recognize how big geographically the city of Bakersfield is. We're approaching 160 square miles. And that is, that is a lot of square miles to cover and drive to get to these calls as well. So there's significant challenges that we're facing, but we're working hard to try to impact them as we can.
Thank you, Chief. And I know you were talking about going for root causes, and I would continue to encourage using data to drive our decision, our identification of the problem of practice. It's easy sometimes for us to give our opinions as to what we think the root cause might be of the challenges that we face, but let's get to the problem of practice so we know really what we're chasing. And I know there have been many efforts to identify root causes, extremely complicated, but the more that we're able to use data to drive that, the more successful we're going to be. Thank you again for all of your service to our community. We appreciate you. And with that, let's take an eight-minute break. Councilmembers, I think we're going to need a little bit of time before we get started with, we still have five presentations to go. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, the next speaker, please, presentation.
Mayor Go, we received a staff memorandum moving the presentation by the city attorney's office to the June 7th department budget presentation meeting. As such, our next presentation will be from the financial services department.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Randy McKeegan, Finance Director, will present.
Welcome, Mr. McKeegan.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. I believe that my presentation will be a little bit less dramatic than what you just saw, but hopefully still informative for you. So it's my pleasure to be able to present to you the proposed budget for the Financial Services Department for the upcoming fiscal year. We'll start off, as you saw in the other two presentations, with the department mission. So this mission lays out the values and the principles of the department and really what drives us to provide the best service we can. So it says here, we see here, that those principles and values really focus on efficiency and effectiveness, and how we provide that service is to meet the goals of both the departments and your, this city council. And the idea of our mission is really focused on stewardship. And so we are stewards of taxpayers' funds and stewards of the taxpayer trust. And so we're doing our best as a department to see that that stewardship comes through in our service. To provide that mission or to meet that mission, the department is broken into four separate divisions. We have the Treasury Division, which manages our cash receipts, manages the issuances of various permits, like business licenses, dog licenses. They have a separate section for investigation, so we actually investigate or review those applications for things like transient occupancy taxes, for the business licenses to ensure that they're accurate and that we're getting the proper collection of revenue. The next section is the Accounting Division. We have, which makes up of the payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable divisions. And so within those sections, we're managing the general ledger of the city of Bakersfield, making sure that everything is recorded in accordance with government accounting standards, and then issuing reports based on the results of the year, whether it be to federal, state, or through our annual report. The next division is the Purchasing Division. They're in charge of the procurement of both services, materials, and supplies, working on helping departments really obtain those services, obtain the materials that they need for their operations, getting the best value for those particular procurements, and making sure everything is, is done in alliance or, or in line with the municipal code. And finally, we have the Real Property Division. They manage the various properties the city has on hand. They also help all the departments with their obtaining of necessary properties, whether it be for water wells, for the Water Department, for road, road projects, whether it be for, you know, parks, land, redevelopment, redevelopment projects, or any other need for operations of any department. But that, the department is broken into, has a complement of 32 employees. And you see here, we've kind of hovered around that 32 number for the last decade. And last year, we actually received approval to increase our complement by one. We added a payroll technician or payroll clerk to really fund it through the Public Safety and Vital Services Funds, really to address the issues of increased staffing and the complexities of dealing with the modern payroll processes. Beyond that, I don't know, council's probably aware, last week, we had the Employee Appreciation Week for the city of Bakersfield. So going to sort of extend that a couple more days to, because beyond numbers in the back of a budget showing our complement or on a chart, I mean, we have 30, over 30 individuals in this department who have really shown a dedication, a level of dedication to really get through that mission that we talked about at the start. This last year has been, you heard it with the fire and PD, it's been quite complicated. There's been a lot of different changes in how we had to handle things. Obviously, there's concerns with health, but our, our staff really came through once again, as they do every year, even despite the COVID pandemic, to come through and do the work that was necessary to get the work done and meet the mission that I laid out earlier. And it's, it's not just obviously Finance Department, it's throughout the city. We've seen this dedication through COVID to really meet those goals and meet the needs of the city, council, city departments, obviously the city citizens. And that is evidenced by our accomplishments this last year. I'm going to go through a few of those. It's really focused, our accomplishments are really focused on, as I said, we talked about meeting council goals. And the most applicable council goal is maintaining fiscal solvency and the related aspects of that particular goal. So each one of these accomplishments really relates back to council goal number three. So the first is related to state stability and consistency. For the 39th consecutive year, as the city finance department has issued an award-winning comprehensive annual financial report, that was for the 2018-19 fiscal year. We plan to continue, obviously, to issue reports of that caliber. Again, looking at fiscal solvency, the department manages the Retire Medical Trust. And that, that trust has grown since it was established in 2007 to have a balance in it of $88 million, which is basically 76% funded of the actuarially determined liability, which is $116 million. So that value has increased significantly, and the funded balance has increased significantly since last year. Last year, the actuary report basically had us at 55%, so there's been a significant jump there. Going, going back, the goal, council goal specifically talks about establishing and building city reserves. So we have, as was discussed at the council budget ramp-up, a couple reserves. So we have, as was discussed at the council budget ramp-up a couple weeks ago, we've built, continued to build the reserve to a level that's actually meeting the benchmark of two months of general operating budget. So we've actually, by the end of this year, we will have met that level. By the end of this year, we'll add $14 million to our reserves, both in rainy day funds and our facility reserves funds. Again, so that would get us to actually a little over two months of reserves by the operating budget by the end of this year, and again, have a $6.6 million facility reserve. Again, looking at costs and operational efficiencies, our department continues to partner with the HR and city manager in the labor negotiations for our three represented units. We manage the cost, costing of the various proposals and making sure that those will meet our budget needs or will stay within our budget needs. And finally, the most, I think the council is aware of, we talked about the pandemic. It affected the city staff, and it obviously affected the city as a whole. The federal government issued the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, or CARES, back in late summer of this last year. The city received $33.5 million of that allocation. And so the city finance department managed those funds, accounted for them, reported them, and make sure they were in compliance with the guidance from the federal government, and also helped the city manager start building various programs to how to spend those funds to basically provide assistance to the residents of the city and mitigate the negative impact. To that end, one of the, I wanted to focus on one of the specific programs that the Finance Department was, took a lead role in. It was the BE Care's Small Business Assistance Program, and I kind of cover that. It was a program that we really built up and stood up at the fall of this last 2020. The department really took a lead role in it during the height of the pandemic, the fall and winter of 2020. So this BE Care's program was really designed to really address small businesses. One of the things that we knew that COVID, the COVID pandemic was really affecting negatively was obviously small businesses. We saw that certain other entities were having similar programs. Kern County had a loan program that was providing small businesses with loans. Other cities throughout, both California and across the nation, had these types of grant programs. So we built our program, sort of leveraging off their past experiences. We built a program that would really focus on what's called microbusinesses, which the California Code defines as those businesses with annual revenues less than $5 million. And we focused on businesses with 25 or fewer full-time equivalents or 25 or fewer employees. We also focused, when we discussed this program, this program with other entities, there was, there was a certain segment of businesses that were being left out because they didn't have payroll reported to the state or federal governments because they were just an individual, individually-owned business. They weren't qualifying for certain federal and local programs. So we wanted to make sure that those individuals were really pulled in to this program as well. And again, as you see in that green chart, the award was between $5,000 to $20,000, again, depending on the size of the business. So with the help of our Technology Services Department, we built an online portal to allow applications to be submitted electronically. We went out and hired a former business manager for the city of Bakersfield, brought her back in to become our program manager. And she worked full-time, really spent a lot of, she was the voice of this program, honestly, with all the applicants. And then after those were set up, we began taking applications on September 21st. And the application period went through December 11th with the hopes of all the applications, approved grants, I should say, had to be approved by the end of December 30th, which was the funding period of this grant. So it was a very successful program. We reviewed over 1,500 applications, and we issued over 938 grants totaling close to $6 million. You see here is a chart showing the distribution of that, those 938 grants. You see in the orange line or the rust-colored line, the number of grants by business segment that were awarded, and then the yellow bar is the dollar amount. You see the, to the far right, the two largest recipients of these grants were the Restaurants and Hospitality and Personal Care segments. Over 208 grants were awarded to the Personal Care segment, which included manicurists, barbers, hairstylists, totaling close to $1.1 million. And we had over, close to $1.2 million awarded to the Restaurant and Hospitality segment, which was about 120 businesses within the city of Bakersfield in that segment. I do want to say, as I said, this was a successful program. This Finance Department really ran most of it, but it couldn't have been as successful without, obviously, the Technology Service Department maintained this online portal. And the Development Services Department, their staff and the code enforcement also reviewed the majority of these applications. And again, the individual we hired, her name was Melanie Dunwoodie. None of that could have been this successful without that partnership that really got this program through the winter of last year. Moving forward, I want to talk about the upcoming plans or goals we have for the 21-22 fiscal year. And again, going back to the council goal number three, related to fiscal solvency, we have a number of programs moving forward with the intent of improving our fiscal operations, our efficiencies. Two of the, three of these contracts are listed here. We have a continuation of the replacement of our Enterprise Resource Planning software, which is over 20 years old. And we're going to issue an RFP, or a request for proposal, to replace that with a contract with the Government Finance Officers Association as a consultant. We are moving forward with a, and finalizing our financial forecasting model. We have a group called Management Partners who are building this model that will help us provide really essential data and information to have these long-term budget outlooks beyond, you know, five, 10, 15 years, and really build a model that allows us to have the right information to do that. Then we also have a risk assessment where we'll be awarding a contract to a company to really look at our, the risks in all areas of the, not just in finance, but in all areas where there's, you know, risk of fraud, risk of noncompliance with local, federal, or state guidelines, and then build sort of a plan of attack, how to address those risks that they identify, potentially build program audits, and expand our efficiencies, again, related to potentially expanding an internal audit function. Again, with talking about consistency, we will begin, continue to issue financial reports as we did, looking towards getting an award once again. We'll be, we issued the 2021 report, I'm sorry, the 1920 report to GFOA in January, and then we'll be issuing the 21 report in December of this year, obviously with the intent of getting the award again. We also obviously have other reports that are required, the Federal Single Audit Report, reports on our grant activity at the federal level. We have reports we require to send to the State Controllers Report. And obviously, I think you're all aware of the Public Safety and Vital Services Report. This report is audited or reviewed by our outside auditor as showing the activity in Public Safety and Vital Services Funds, making sure that those expenditures are in line with the 13 priorities of the measure, and obviously keep making sure that the funds are not commingled with other general fund dollars. Again, we talked about the city reserve program and having, we have been able to meet our two-month benchmark, so to speak, but we will need to continue to manage the reserve. As budget grows, our benchmark obviously increases, so we need to make sure we stay in line with that. Or if council desires to move beyond that benchmark, we will definitely play a part in building that reserve. And we talked about unfunded liabilities with the OPEB or the Retiree Medical Trust. And so we plan to establish something similar, the Pension Rate Stabilization Fund, which is really a trust fund that, similar to OPEB, sets aside funds that can address or be offset the unfunded liability in our CalPERS liability, while also building a reserve so that the, if there, for whatever reason, there is a shortfall in our budget, we can use that reserve to fund pension contributions, you know, in future years, again, if there's a shortfall. And then finally, just like CARES, we continue to have additional funds coming from the federal government. In this case, it's the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds. The guidance from those funds, for how to use those funds is going to be different than CARES. It's beyond just dealing with COVID, but it will be also some economic recovery and rejuvenation. The guidance, as I said, is not final, but we will be managing that once the reporting requirements come through. The department will also be in charge of reporting it and obviously building different programs and helping build different programs for those funds. And now, obviously, whatever, when we talk about plans and goals, you can't have any of that without numbers. So these are the numbers for the Finance Department and our operations. You see here, and this is a report showing our proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year, showing our actual costs from last year and our adopted budget for this year, and comparing it to our proposal. And you see here, we have a budget proposed of $4,053,900. It's a slight decrease, actually, of close to $32,000 from last, this year's budget. It's broken out in the top section by function and the bottom section by funding source. You see, again, it was a reduction of $32,000. The largest reduction is actually in the Assessment Districts, section of our funding, which is what drives that reduction in total. Last year, or this year, we had a refinancing of a bond in one of our Assessment Districts. No such refinancing is occurring this year, which is why you see that reduction of 77%. You also see a significant increase, well, a little over 3% in the general fund. You'll see a corresponding decrease in the TRIP, which is a third line down in the green section, of $22,000 for our local TRIP match funding. That really relates to, the program is continuing to wind down. The projects are winding down. So we are shifting staff that were funded by TRIP into the general fund, which is creating that corresponding increase. We also have increases related to cost of living, step increases, and some additional training that we've added to the general fund this year, again, driving that a 3.09% increase. So that's our budget. Those are the numbers. That's our goal. That's our plan, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McKeegan. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McKeegan, for your presentation today. I appreciate it. I just wanted to give you a quick shout-out for, and your staff, for all the work you did related to BE Care's. And the pressures on you and all of your team and during the pandemic, which we all were facing, and to be able to do that program, develop it, and then launch it, and release those funds was, was great. And so, kudos to you and your team. Thank you also for working on the Section 115 Trust. This is something that I've been talking about for years, and I'm excited that we're moving in that direction now. So I think that's a, that's a good, that's a good step in the right direction. And then finally, one of the elements that I'm most excited about that you're a part of is the downtown parking structure. And so I'd like to get some data on trends and how we're looking post-pandemic in terms of the number of users. If you can provide that offline, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We didn't include, obviously, as you probably noted, but yes, we'll get some numbers on
I saw.
the progress.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Randy. Nice concise presentation. One question was, we're still waiting on a report, an analysis that I think you, that must be ongoing on our pension fund costs and when they will turn over the next 20 years. You know, that sort of, we just really want a one graph that explains it all to us someday, says this is a turning point, and these are the assumptions. But I think we had 450, 30 million unfunded liability. That means that's money that we're obligated to, that we haven't paid. Okay? Today, we're obligated. It'll get bigger in the future. Just let's remember that we have a liability we haven't paid current. Now, public corporations, what's the minimum? 85% funded, I think, if you're a public corporation. I get a little report once in a while. They like to brag they're 95% funded. That's where we ought to be if we're going to honor our obligations to all of our employees someday. So I had beaten the drum constantly for a six-month reserve because I, nobody's heard it, they're tired of me saying it, that no sane person raises their kids to say, you save six months first before you buy a house, before you do anything else, or go to the beach. You have six months of savings to survive. It's just, we're raised, it's our culture. I'm still arguing that we should change our policy to reach a six-month reserve when we can. It may take us five years. Everybody argued against me, and finally, I got two months. Two months for a city this size, that isn't going to help us in a pandemic if they can't print money next time in Washington. And they won't be able to do it again. They did it once. We'll never get it again. We need a much, much bigger reserve. It can provide offsets, exactly like you were just saying. If for a while we can't fund those, well, now we can. We don't go into meltdown. This was so easy to reach, we didn't think it would be. It was. We can, within five years, build ourselves to six months. So I hope that'll get some further consideration as we move forward. So, last thing, a little different kind of question. The programs you talked about for the small businesses and the grants for that slide, how, if any, how much are we budgeting for next year of that same kind of a program?
Councilmember Freeman, we have not actually received the guidance on how ARPA funds can be directed and that, if it's going to be a similar type of program. So we are, once that guidance comes into play
Okay, but those were funds, that's funny, provided from outside. We don't have anything in our own budget from our own funds provided for entrepreneurs and small businesses.
There might be some economic and community development funds that are still available.
Well, I would suggest that we budget, if we can, something, I don't know how many million, but something contingency, just in case the federal government doesn't come through for us, so we can help those small business owners here. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman, we do have, and this will, you'll see this in our next workshop, the Economic Development Department has $1 million for different types of economic development programs. We could allocate a bigger portion of that to business assistance, but it was intended for several different programs like facade improvements, entrepreneurship, and so forth. But we do have $1 million to work with in next year's budget already.
Could we also use the 700,000, I don't know, redefine it a little bit? We have 100,000 per ward, sort of 700,000, which is fairly loose in the definition of what we can use it for, for economic development, to help entrepreneur or something. I don't know if some of that could ever be tapped if we couldn't, if we didn't have adequate federal funds.
I think it's at the, I think you're referencing the EOA program that has $700,000 budgeted each year, and it is intended to go towards those EOA sort of program criteria, but it is flexible funding of the council that if, you know, council were to take a different direction than the EOAs, the council could. But we do have program criteria and things that we've designed. And then I think, in many ways, it is assistance to businesses that are looking to either retain jobs, or expand jobs, or make capital improvements. But those, those are some funds that are available, as well as we have $1.7 million. Besides the $1 million for economic development programs, we have another $1.7 million set aside for implementing our strategic plan as it's finished. And if there are elements in that around entrepreneurship, some of that same $1.7 million could go towards those purposes as well.
I'm hoping we're not in as dire straits as we were a year ago. I'm just saying, in case we don't have federal dollars, because that does save jobs. From business closing down costs a job, just like a business creates. So we kind of should treat them the same way. Thanks.
Councilmember Freeman, I did want to mention, we do have a planned presentation to a committee meeting on the 18th, I believe, that will cover a lot of the pension-related. And we'll hopefully have the chart that you need that kind of shows out where we'll be in the future, 20, 20, 30, 40 years down the road.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Mr. McKeegan, thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you for the responsiveness to mobilizing those grants. I and my colleagues heard, night after night, weekend after weekend, the calls of our business people who were really troubled and concerned. I had grown men who would cry, saying, what are we going to do? We can take care of ourselves and our families, but what about all of our employees? And your ability to move quickly when the funds were available really made all of the difference for hundreds and hundreds of business people and their families, and some of the employees, actually, who have the least flexibility in funding. So thank you for being responsive in that area.
Absolutely. I was really glad that it was, I would definitely view it as something to hang around on my hat. I would put my hat on and say that was something I was really proud of, of really what we accomplished on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see any other requests for this segment. And so, Madam City Clerk, what's the next department presentation?
Our next presentation will be from the Human Resources Department.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg, any comments before?
No, we'll kick it over to Kristi Tenter, Human Resources Director.
Welcome, Ms. Tenter, your first time as a department.
It is. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yes, it is Human Resources, first time presenting independently. So looking forward to sharing a little bit of an overview and the activities that we've had going on this past year and moving forward. So Kristi Tenter, Human Resources Director. Did I not? There we go, thank you. So as an overview to what we do, talk about four functional areas that Human Resources provides citywide. First and foremost, recruitment and retention. Recruitment encompasses the full employment lifecycle, so everything from creating the job descriptions, posting the jobs, attracting talent, to their first day starting on the job. We continue to work with all departments in filling all positions. We do this under the guidance of three civil service boards and the approved civil service rules. In addition, with retention, we want to keep them. We want to know why they want to be here, what's best, so we continuously are assessing trends, looking at data, turnover, conducting exit interviews, to really understand if this isn't why, where you want to be right now, why is that? How can we do better? So really analyzing what we can do and what employee needs are to retain the talent that we attract. From Labor and Employee Relations, we collaborate with three labor groups to define working conditions, benefits, and salaries. We have good working relationship with those. We develop policy, meet routinely. Employee Relations focused on that morale, employee engagement, our employee incentive team. It also focuses on diversity, inclusion, with our employee, Employment Opportunity Plan. So a lot going on in that category of how we can, again, improve our working conditions and collaborate and listen to the employee needs. For Training and Development, HR assesses, brings in vendors, and also conducts a variety of training, not so much during COVID, but we tried a lot of online platforms last year, to keep skillset development going strong, technical training, policy training, whatever the needs of our performance development process is. And lastly, Benefit Administration, so administering the health and welfare plans, enrollment, eligibility, our employee assistance program, and our wellness initiatives, because again, we want to have, employees want to join us, we want to keep them here, and we want to keep them well. I'd be remiss if I didn't share the Word Cloud to the left of your screen. This is something that's very centric to the HR team, and we developed it internally. This is displayed on each of the workstations of our team members in HR, and it really was evolved from how we do things. So we talk about the what, we know what we do, and we know what services and programs we provide, but how do we do it? So when we talked as a team about, what's a leading, cutting-edge HR team? How are you really a business partner? How do you add value to the organization? These are the words that keep us grounded and focused. We want to be fair, we want to be involved, we want to have great customer service, we want to have equal treatment, we want to coach and lead. And so these are really centric to how we want to engage with every employee, every applicant, every question that enters HR. So something very important to all of us as we grow as a team. So talking about how and what, now we say, well, who? And historically, we've had an average of 10 in the HR department. I'll point out that right now, we're at historic 2008 headcount levels, with 13 in the department. Heard earlier a few questions about comparables. How do we look as a comparable? Well, as a comparable, there are several professional organizations that give ratio suggestions for human resources. The Society for Human Resources has traditionally given a 1 to 100 ratio, so one HR professional to 100 employees. They recently changed that in 2017 to 1.58. So they would be saying, oh, you probably need about 18 to 29 employees to really be an effective HR team. Bureau of Labor Statistics says 1.1 to 100. And more importantly, when we look at comparable agencies, the city of Glendale has 17 full-time HR positions, the city of Fresno has 38 full-time positions, and the city of Pasadena has 28 full-time positions. So as we move through our presentation today, we'll be talking about potential staff additions for '21, '22, but at this time, we are at a full-time headcount of 13, based on our citywide headcount. This is a look at our Human Resources org chart and how we are allocated into positions. The left side of the House really focuses on that recruitment and employee relations, helping with disciplinary hearings, coaching, mentoring, performance management, training, and most importantly, recruitment efforts. The right side of the House focuses on those benefit and wellness activities. I have three positions highlighted that we'll talk about. Those are changes that we'll discuss as part of the proposed '21, '22 budget. We've heard it from others, and I can't talk about 2021 without looking and thinking about how COVID reframed our work environment. Truly, COVID-19 was a skillset of every functional HR area. When you looked at how the pandemic impacted our workforce, our organization, the needs of our employees, it was really overwhelming at times and created a whole nother full-time job for us. HR partnered very strongly with risk management in interpreting regulatory guidelines, creating policy, understanding the guidance under the city manager's office, employee morale and support. The questions were endless of, what do I do? What happens if this scenario occurs? Reassuring, benefit administration, leaves of absence, pay, what will I do? So it really was just an all-hands-in approach to our environment. We started last March with stay-at-home orders, and this picture particularly became our anthem, potentially hard to see, but wellness, strength, and commitment. That was the first week of the stay-at-home orders, as we were checking in on employees. And that is what we endlessly saw from employees, strength, commitment, and wellness as we moved through the pandemic. We came into July of last year, and we really, we start, we were 80% plus were in the office actively. It was work as usual, but did not look usual at all. We were now in Zoom, we were social distancing, but we were here, and we had a lot of work to do. September brought a whole nother atmosphere of, now we have to wear masks all the time, and social distance six feet or more, but we need to hire 100 officers, and we need to test 800 applicants in a written exam. How do we do that when we're not supposed to have more than 25 people in a room? So again, just a lot of innovation and thought of, how do we keep providing services that are essential to our community with all of these restrictions? We entered into November, and they said, well, now you have to quarantine differently, more regulations from OSHA and the state in terms of how we operate. And we adapted. Once again, that commitment and that strength prevailed. January, more changes with the regulatory agencies, more restrictions on benefits. Now employees are scared, how am I going to pay? How am I going to afford? Do I have to resign just so I can take care of my family? These were very real questions. We deal with them today, and we'll continue to deal with them moving forward, but we truly are better together. And the communication has made us stronger, the strength is there and has been enhanced, and, and we're thankful for it. And we have a great team as a result. But I said business as usual. And so, business as usual supported our overarching goals within the city. We had to, to date, or July through April, at the time of this report, we had filled 223 full-time and part-time positions. We maintained a 92% fill rate for all positions, 125 recruitments completed, over 6,000 applications screened, and the year's still going, and we're still hiring, and still doing more, and we're excited to do so. But all of the priorities, all of the goals that you've heard from other departments, start right here. We have to have the bodies in place, be able to attract, be able to retain, to get the work done. We had labor negotiations in process, we have reopeners, we successfully completed our re-opener with SEIU last year, and we maintained open communication. We had weekly meetings with labor groups to talk about, how, how are the employees doing? What's going on? What do they need? How is COVID impacting their life? Where are misconceptions? So a really great opportunity, again, to really build on that communication strategy. One of the most exciting things for our group was the launch and addition of technology. HR launched e-forms, and had, which is an automated workflow, no paper. I hate to admit, but we have a lot of paper, and we are moving away from it. So we are taking all employment processes and internal workflows and making them electronic, no more envelopes, no more on the desk, no more whose desk is it on? All electronic with enhanced communication, so the employee knows where it's at. It was a fun process for our group, and we continue to build. We also are in process of implementing onboard, another online module, no paper, to get us into modern times and to streamline processes. We'll also be looking at adding a performance management model at the end of the year. When we specifically talk about how Human Resources has supported PSVS, we look at, we filled 194 of the allocated PSVS positions. Those were filled, 89% of those were filled by mid-year of 2021. So again, that was a priority. We heard it from the council, we heard it from the community, we made it a priority internally. We conducted countless hiring exams to bring in those applicants, which included written and assessments. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, and how it impacts some of our sworn compliment. We did all of the pre-employment, so again, Human Resources facilitates every step of the employment lifecycle for hiring for all departments and all employees, seasonal and part-time included. We added, again, another technology tool, candidate text messaging. You just don't know how many people forget when their interview is. They're so eager to work here, but they just forget when their interview time is. So it's so great when we have 400 police officer candidates training a text message. They all get a text message, emails, paper, it all goes into the junk mail. So we can text message, we can text message all of them, we can let them know how they're doing, we can check in. We also implemented tablets. We want to be remote and on the road. We know that we need to go out to job fairs as they resume, and we want to make sure we can share with them real information, help them apply, and be remote as we need to be. We also greatly expanded our recruitment, advertising, and social media outreach. We have to be present. Just two, three weeks ago, when I first started this presentation, I looked on governmentjobs.com, 305 posted police officer jobs in the state of California. We can't miss a day of not being present. If you have not watched a Facebook Live that gives an orientation or an intro to our jobs about what it takes to be a dispatcher, they're fun, take a look at them. It really lets a candidate know what they're signing up for, and what's ahead, and what's in process. If we're not out there and we're not present, another agency is, and sometimes they're paying more, or have other opportunities that we're not quite comparable with yet. And so we need to let them know that this culture, this community embraces and welcomes them, and this is a great way to do it. Specifically, Human Resources was able to support quality public safety services over the last year. In particular, we heard the chief of police talk about the website, joinbpd.us. We're hoping, maybe a month, two months tops, we're going to launch that. Right now, if you go to the city of Bakersfield's career page, or the police department's career page, not so attractive, just to be blunt, it's just a manifestation of what information is on there. We're, most large agency, comparable agencies, have a dedicated police recruitment website. This is going to be an engaging preview of employee testimonials, and up-to-date live events, and the jobs, and the benefits, and all the perks that go with the jobs. So it's going to be a great recruitment tool for us to utilize. To date, we've supported three academies, and we have one in progress that will graduate in June, we have another one starting in July. Sworn compliment has increased by 43 positions, that's evolving and changing. The chief said 41, that just happened, but then we added six laterals, so again, that number just keeps changing. We talk about what it takes, and I appreciate Councilmember Gray speaking to, does the public know what it takes to hire a police officer? I didn't before I came here, and I will tell you, it is an intensive and highly regulated process. And we have hired 134 trainees, and our compliment has grown 43. So again, we have challenges with recruitment in terms of getting the right candidates in, retaining them, getting through the academy, but we've got a lot of innovation at work and at play to, to better those numbers. But we will meet the 100 goal, definitely. We have introduced hiring incentives. We introduced, with council authority and approval, a trainee recruitment incentive in 2019, recently updated that. We added the lateral academy graduates and the dispatchers. We cannot forget the totality that dispatch plays in the opportunities for police to do their jobs efficiently. It's a tough, tough job, to put it mildly. So we have added that to incentivize. Incentives have grown exponentially over the years. There are some agencies paying, Kern County has posted up to 25,000 incentives for hiring, Shafter recently posted 5,000, I've seen up to 50,000 across the nation for hiring police officers. It's a tough market, we're not alone, but we're, have steps in place to have effective change. We don't see our employees leaving to go for those agencies, so we're doing something right. We have a good culture in play, we have good opportunities and assignments, but we do need to be competitive with the benefit and understand that some do move or change, and we want to be supportive with that incentive. We implemented Critical, which is an online emergency dispatch test, to again, help screen dispatchers. We implemented employee referral program. We believe our employees are our best recruiters out in the street. If you haven't seen, on the screen, we have a little picture, and we have our recruitment cards with a QR code, talks about our mission, our contact information, you can scan with your phone, it will go straight to our recruitment careers page where you can apply for a job. Again, want to be present in the community. We also are able to then track a lot of where these individuals are, so we can see, are candidates looking at us in Southern California, Northern California? Where should we go? Where should we focus our outreach? So a really great tool, thanks to Technology Services and BPD staff. Lastly, we are sponsoring trainees. Trainees can be asked to put upfront costs for uniforms and equipment, sometimes $700 initially for different non-personalized goods. We want to be the concierge of the police trainee industry. We do not want to have, when you look at the demographics, these are 21-plus-year-old individuals coming into our workforce. We don't want them to feel strapped right off the bat with having to put upfront costs for work tools and equipment. So we will be sponsoring them in that regard for our equipment and uniforms. So that's what we've been doing. Let's talk about as we plan for next year. There's a few things that we keep in mind, industry trends, we need to be cognizant, private and public sector, we need to know what's happening in our local environment, Amazons, In-N-Out, Walmart, what are they paying? How do we compete? Again, we need to know what the market looks like in terms of how we're competing with those jobs. We need to be cognizant of regulatory environmental changes, whether that's minimum wage, whether that's training requirements, it needs to be part of our strategic outlook in what we propose in our budget and our priorities within the department. Employee feedback, we cannot overlook the voice of our employees who are out and performing the work. We need to understand the challenges, the concerns, the, the good stuff, right? And we need to recognize it, very important concept. And again, city council established overarching goals. What are your priorities that the community has voiced to you? How do we support those best? So with that, we have two segments of our proposal for '21, '22. First is PSVS, our Phase Three. We request the addition of one HR analyst, two. Few reasons for this request. One, we're at historic 2008 staffing levels, and we have a lot more going on than we did in 2008, not just pure headcount, but program activity. We talk about the sworn police officers hiring 100 people. Historically, we did not, we had years that we didn't even have a police academy, or we shared with the county, and maybe we had five to seven people in an academy. We know with the goal to hire 100, and the rate of successful candidates in the market, we need to do two academies per year. That's it. We have to do that to maintain and retain. So we need someone dedicated, we can't be an interim staff or an extra staff assignment. We need someone who is knowledgeable. It's a highly regulated, the Peace Officers Standards and Training Post is a state agency that says you must complete these steps to have a police officer sworn and with arrest authorities. We need someone in our staff that can continue to focus on that. And last, innovation, outreach, and timeliness is key. We've already talked about the need to be present in the market, but we need to have those, that assessment of trends, we need to look at data, we need to move forward in our, and apply that to our HR practices and procedures. Our second part of our PSVS request includes examinations, so many of our exams, particularly sworn individuals in police, we have to have facilities that we rent due to the large volume of employees. We sometimes have to buy tests to administer to them, and then with COVID, we have a whole nother layer of cleaning supplies, and don't share a pencil, and those types of things. The last piece is, is near and dear to my heart, and that of risk management, and that is a training allocation specifically for the police department employees. Few things come to mind when I think about this request. We want to focus on wellness and resilience. When we look at national surveys, many forums are reporting that 25% of officers hired resign within years one and three. I don't want to hire 100 just to turn around and watch 25% of them be gone after the first couple of years. Retention is going to be key, so we need to be cognizant of that and put support tools via training into those career paths. Last year in 2020, Senate Bill 542 included post-traumatic stress syndrome, PTSD, as a presumption under workers' compensation. Historically, PTSD has been looked at as somewhat of a career ender for a police officer. It does not have to be. If it's recognized and treated appropriately, it does not have to end a career. If it's recognized and treated appropriately, it does not have to end a career. We don't want it to end a career. We work effortlessly with our police to provide resources so it does not. When you look at the general population, PTSD impacts about 7% of those that have a traumatic incident. In the military, it's about 20%. For law enforcement, it's about 35%. It is a very real concept and can manifest in many ways, and with it being an automatic presumption, which presumption just basically means it's going to be an accepted workers' comp claim. We need to very carefully manage it and have support tools to offset it, so we don't lose those to an industrial disability retirement scenario, and they're able to continue in their career path. When we talk about career statistics, police officers by profession are the second highest rate of suicide, when you look at all professions across the board. That's disheartening. We saw that video today, and while the chief didn't mean it for to be sensationalized, it's the reality of what they face each day. They're the first one there, not often welcomed, and the one that's not really invited, and so it's something that's very difficult. They have a higher, a 34.6% higher suicide rate than the general population. We can't be, we can't ignore that, we need to understand that, we need to have a culture of wellness and support. And so while society and communities decide what the future of policing is, we cannot avoid or ignore the impact that is to an individual. We want to come here and do a great job. We get hired to serve and protect, and when there's so many commentaries on what they could do differently, their jobs have changed, their job descriptions a couple of years ago, very different than what we're asking of them today. I'm sure a lot of them like to play basketball, but we may need to even train a few in that area, I'm not sure. But it's a big change, and so not to be cliche, but this is going to be a test of Change Management 101, and we need the right training programs and support in place, and just the ability for them to be able to say, I'm struggling right now, this job is tough, don't resign, keep with us, let's move forward together. So these training allocations are really focused. Over the last several months, we've instituted a monthly session between risk and HR under the support of the chief that focuses on what are the more traditional outlets for police? How do you deal with it? How do you build resiliency? How do you become that community partner? We want to continue in that. So that focuses on our three requests under PSVS. They all support council goal number one, quality public safety services. They're outlined with a total cost of $198,267. The addition of one HR analyst is an ongoing cost of approximately $117,000. The pre-employment exams for the PSVS positions being requested in this year will be an approximate $21,000, that's a one-time cost for this fiscal year. And then again, the police officer and academy training sessions, we'd like to request $60,000. I didn't put ongoing or one time, it's to be determined. We'll see if the success, we'll look at the measurables, we'll see what feels right, we'll see how the PD gives feedback, and we'll see if that's a future request ongoing, but something we definitely want to see implemented. That's inclusive of Phase Three, PSVS in general fund. Few requests, we would like to add an accountant-one type position. As the mayor intro, this is our first presentation, standalone presentation as a department. We became a department last year at the beginning of this fiscal year, I apologize, and we want to have a dedicated resource for fiscal oversight and monitoring in terms of our healthcare programs, our contract management agreements, fiscal salary and trend analysis. Most departments have a business manager. We believe this work can be conducted by an accountant-level position. We'd like to request that. In addition, we had the three positions, the two positions that were highlighted on our org chart, we would like to do position changes, HR supervisor to an HR manager, and an HR clerk to an HR specialist. These positions will assist in succession plans, and also really target our automation and workflow, our technology aspects of HR, new ERP system coming from finance, these will all take people, processes that need support. Overall operating budget is an increase of 13.08%. To the general fund, we've heard from our finance director, those personnel costs that were built in. In addition, we have our recruitment costs. The HR budget predominantly, 85% plus, supports other departments in their hiring, in their pre-employment, and their compliance measures. So those recruitment costs are reflective of other departments' recruitment requests. And then the technology licensing is the biggest increase at almost $100,000, and again, that just supports the NeoGov expansions and the workflow opportunities. Whoops. You can see that change is $187,353, 13.08%. Goals, they are mighty, and we have many, but I summarize them here. Police recruitment and innovation. We meet biweekly with command staff members and training staff in BPD to talk about what can we do better? How does it work? What are others doing? What feels good? What are we saying? We survey trainees. We've surveyed those in the last five years to say, why'd you come here? Do you like it? What was the best? What didn't work? We're using that to make effective change. We are looking at training programs, we'll re-institute our real leadership, that's taken a brief hiatus with COVID, and really talk about that succession planning of future leaders. Also, civil treatment, how do we have employees work more collaboratively together, especially in diverse work environments? We will continue to drive HR technology systems, again, no paper, and more innovation, so we will complete our onboarding and start with performance management. Labor negotiations, we are entering into a season of which we will have reopeners with three of our bargaining units, so we will start having those conversations very soon, and that will be a primary goal for '21-'22. Wellness initiatives, we really do want to enhance our wellness programs, make it more readily available. We've partnered with police and fire as they assess Cortico, the online app for their wellness programs. We'd like to add enhancements to that and broaden it for miscellaneous employees. And lastly, diversity, inclusion, and employee engagement, understanding the workforce, having an inclusive environment for our employees, and understanding the demographics of our community and how that relates to our employee population. So in summary, when you offset the two funds, our total expense requested is $163,614, roughly a 10.4% increase to the total operating budget for salary for general fund and PSVS for Human Resources. With that, I'm truly honored and appreciate the employees that I work with. We are the sound of something better, and we have more to give, and exciting to see this next year roll out and what we are able to do better together. So I will end with that, and if any questions or comments available.
Thank you, Ms. Tenter. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Tenter, just one request, and that is, after this presentation, if you can go back to your office and give every one of your staff members a high five, or an air high five, or fist bump, whatever is appropriate with COVID, and just to thank them on behalf of this council for all the work that they've done. You know, colleagues, we've added 263 people to our headcount since PSVS was first approved, and this, these are the unsung heroes of our city, the folks in Human Resources, and the work that they're doing is tremendous, they're the backbone of our city, and I'm very appreciative for all that work. So that has a direct impact to public safety and all of the services that we're trying to deliver to our citizens every day, and that's not lost on me, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and it will gladly be relayed back to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say welcome back, you know, we missed you, and we would not be in the position that Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned without you, so appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Kristi, thank you so much for your hard work and the dedication of your team. You guys are a small but mighty group, and happy to support you guys as we continue to grow as a city. I've got a quick question for you, I don't know if it's because I'm new to the council, but I would love a little bit more information on what does the process look like for someone to apply to become an officer here in the city? From the point of submitting that initial paper, or I don't know if it's an online application at this point, to the time where you complete the academy training, what does that look like? And then when do those, I know we have two a year, two academies, so when do those take place?
So first, I will say that we are aiming for January and July of each year for the academies. We start the process much earlier than that. The typical recruitment process is six months from date of application to date of hire, and we have an excellent flow chart that we can share that really outlines every step in the timeline in between. We will definitely share that.
That'd be excellent. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Arias? Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, Kristi, good job.
Thank you.
My old boss had one of two sayings, I'll just tell you one of them. Every time we had a problem, and you certainly had a problem navigating COVID, and watch how well you came through that, is quite an inspiration, but he always said, use your creative imagination, use your creative imagination, use your creative imagination every time you weren't solving a problem. I just want to say, you and your staff have definitely used your creative imagination. Just congratulations, and you run it half the staff that other cities do, so good for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Ms. Tenter, thank you so much. It's been said that one machine can do the work of 50 ordinary men. No machine can do the work of one extraordinary man. What does it take for the city of Bakersfield to hire more extraordinary men and women? You've delineated some of the requests, but is there anything else? Because it really comes down to who we are and the people that we have that make all of the difference. So it is well worth our resources to invest in people. Is there anything else that you have not shared with us that is needed to hire extraordinary men and women to serve the city of Bakersfield?
Mayorgo, that's probably a theoretical conversation, I could go off on several tangents and spend a lot of time on, and still many would disagree with me, but I really do feel that one of the core, the core aspects of hiring those is really being those spokespersons. So anytime we have the ability to share why we work, where we work, and how great it is, and really identify, it's something that we talk about with our leadership, our supervisory group a lot, is you're the voice, you set the stage, you set the culture, and so make it what you want and share it. And so we have to focus on the positive, we can't focus on the negative, and then share it like crazy. It's, you know, it's that Facebook post, you only share the good stuff, right? You don't share the bad stuff. We need to share a lot of the good stuff about what we're doing and the opportunities that we have here. Now then, there'll be some that'll say, but we need more staff, and we need more money, and those types of things, and those definitely are key program aspects that we need to monitor and ensure in place, but I truly believe that we all need to be ambassadors for city employment.
Yes. You talked about PTSD and the critical nature of that and the severe impact on our men and women who serve so well. I'm really delighted that we have a new program coming that's going to offer free services at ease. Some of us were in a meeting the other day where that presentation took place, but where the men and women of our law enforcement and those who serve in highly stressful jobs will be able to take advantage of this program where the city is not directly involved, but they can feel with anonymity to go to seek counseling services and other services that will help. But let's continue to support however we can those who face the challenges of PTSD, any kind of trauma, and we know that it is easy for our personal lives, they get intertwined with who we are and what do we need to continue to support the men and women who work here. But thank you so much for all that you've done during this challenging year, and we look forward to what's ahead. Thank you again.
And that's a great plug, just one last thing, Mayorgo. At Ease was here last week and will be here this week again, doing sessions for all patrol employees and sharing that great program opportunity, plus some just, again, resilience and best practices that officers can implement immediately and on the job. So yes, good organization to be partnered with, we look forward to their impact on our agency, definitely.
This is a program that is coming from Santa Barbara, and we're going to have a model right here. I think Chief Martenson, who recently retired, will be supervising the Kern County part of it, but lots of opportunity there.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, next presentation, please.
Our next presentation is from Technology Services Department.
And welcome.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Gregory Pranavos, Technology Services Director. I'm pleased to present to you the 2022 proposed budget for the Technology Services Department. As this is the first time I appear before you, I thought it important to begin with an introduction of who we are within Technology Services by presenting our mission and core values. These represent the overall culture as a department. As you read the mission and that core values, I hope you take note that the words "technology" and "digital" are the only other, are the only words that are associated with the traditional IT industry. Our focus is on people, improvement, outcomes, and processes in which we achieve our goals. Technology is but the tool. It is the people and the purpose that breeds life, life into and derives benefit from the initiative, systems, and processes that we implement. From our beginnings as a single data processing clerk at the Finance Department in the early 1970s, to our transition to the division under the city manager's office in the 1990s, Technology Services is entering another transformative phase in our evolution. By becoming a full department within the city, within the organization we serve, we are moving ever forward to meet the needs of the city and its citizens. Technology Services is comprised of three divisions, the administrative division, the professional services division, and the technical services division. Each division is comprised of one or more groups, and each group contains one or more teams. Teams focus on a specific area or technology discipline, such as GIS or end device support. This year, we created our divisional structure and two new groups. The security services group was created to have dedicated staff focusing on physical and cybersecurity efforts to secure city assets. This group is staffed by a supervisor and two technology systems analysts. The public safety group was created to dedicate staff to work closely with the police and fire departments, learning their business needs and implementing technology solutions, and provide benefit and efficiencies. This group is staffed by a supervisor, also known as the Public Safety Liaison, two technology systems analysts, and five technology system technicians. The public safety group makes up about 14% of our current authorized complement. These additions would not have been possible if it were not for the funding of the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure. Also during the year, this fiscal year, the former database and programming team has begun retooling to become our new data analysis team. Staff have taken on the task of educating themselves on the newer technology disciplines of machine learning, artificial intelligence, and data science. As they increase their knowledge and develop their skills, they will be a vital team that will work with all departments within the city, consolidating data and developing centralized data mart and robust reporting systems throughout which data-driven decisions can be made. I would like to take a moment to discuss our technical position structure, as I believe it's somewhat unique within the city. In fiscal year 2020, we restructured our technical job descriptions and consolidated from 12 different position descriptions down to three, technology systems engineer, technology systems analyst, and technology systems technician, each with common general duties, knowledge, and abilities, and including specialized disciplines within each description. This restructure achieved three goals. First, normalize pay across disciplines for like-level work. Second, allow staff to be more agile, which benefits both the department and the employee, allowing for the movement of staff between teams, groups, and divisions where staff are needed or for training and development opportunities without having to wait for a position to be vacated. Third, provide the staff with the ability to promote within their current position to a level two based on to a level two based on merit, as well as provide multiple avenues of advancement as the department grows. This structure will hopefully assist in the recruitment efforts as it makes us more competitive than we once were, and we hope to reduce turnover with offering better opportunities for advancement. Recruitment for technical staff have always been challenged as we not only have to compete with other government agencies, but also with the lucrative and attractive private sector. Now that I've introduced who we are, I'd like to share with you some of what we do. All public-facing services within the city involve the use of technology that technology services researchers acquire, supports, and maintains. At last count, there are over 10,000 devices that we support and maintain throughout the city. Before you is a list of technologies assigned to each of the over 400 police officers. This provides a sense of what technology services staff maintain for a single group of individuals in one department. Also listed on the slide are some of the specialized software installed throughout the Police Department. A similar set of equipment, systems, and specialized software are in use throughout the Fire Department. Police and Fire combined consume about 44% of technology services resources, making them our largest customers. In comparing data from 2008 to 2018, we could determine the increase of technology use the 10 years prior to PSVS and where we are currently. The slide before you illustrates the growth of devices and software throughout the city. As mentioned previously, device count is just over 10,000 devices. The count provided is only for those devices that are maintained in inventory. There are many other devices and peripherals that are supported by TS but that are not maintained in inventory and thus not included in those totals. Also illustrated is the increased use of software, both specialized and general, throughout the city. Currently, there are approximately 350 different software applications managed by Technology Services, which includes software suites that have multiple modules counted as a single software application. Each software application can have an install base with anywhere from a few to thousands of installed instances across the department. The slide before you illustrates the amount of data and projects as it increased over the same years. Currently, we have about 400 terabytes of data. For comparison, the Hubble Space Telescope produces 120 gigabytes of data per week of detailed images of our galaxy, which is roughly equivalent to 3,600 feet of printed books on a shelf. With that information and a little math, the city's current 400 terabytes of data would be the same as the data output from the Hubble Space Telescope over 65 years, or a shelf full of books that is 2,304 miles long. Also depicted is a graph of the number of projects that Technology Services is involved with and the increase over that same time period. Technology upgrade, the technology upgrade within this council chambers is just but one of those projects. The installation took six weeks, but the overall project included many months of planning and preparation. Some projects are small, involving a couple of staff for a few weeks. Others are massive, involving hundreds of staff across multiple agencies over many years, such as the regional radio system. Technology Services is on track to exceed 100 projects this year in various stages of completion. Our final graph depicts service requests or help desk tickets. Service requests have increased steadily over the 10-year period prior to PSVS, and then a sharp increase over the last few years, which is expected to do the increase in staffing within the city. Currently, there are over 13,000 support tickets for this current year. Looking at each of the five data sets over the years and averaging the cumulative overall increase from 2008 to 2021, for each year, we get a calculated annualized rate of change. Of course, there have been various actual rates of change from year to year, but this provides us a simplified expected growth rate moving forward based on historical data. From this, we can make assumptions and forecasting, such as we will have an increase in new devices by 23%, or service requests will increase by about 10% for fiscal year 2022. Given the developing initiatives of implementing data analysis and expansion of services within the city as a whole, I expect data, software, and projects to increase above their respective projected growth rate. Not only do we foresee that more technology will be deployed each year, but also with city staff that historically have not been technology users are now starting to utilize more technology in their work, increasing our overall user base with existing staff. Speaking of staff, I'm fortunate to have a talented group of technologists and business-minded people who understand the higher purpose our work contributes to and who take professional pride in their work. As such, many of our staff have received High Five Awards, 34 and counting this year alone. The High Five Award is a citywide peer recognition program offered by the Employee Incentive Committee. You can see some of the High Five Awards on the slide before you. In addition, our Assistant Director, Erin Kennedy, was not only selected as a recipient of the Excellence in Action Award in October, but was also awarded the Extra Mile Award. This award is selected by the city manager. I am proud that technology services staff are recognized by their fellow workers on the front lines to the highest levels within our organization. It is a testament to their dedication to public service. Here we have the authorized complement personnel for Technology Services from fiscal year 2008 to fiscal year 2022. Please note that the first 12 years, Technology Services effectively has no staff growth, although, as mentioned previously, the systems, services, and devices that we support grew exponentially. In 2015, seven employees of the Public Works Communications Division merged with Technology Services. This was done to better align two divisions that were working on similar, were doing similar work in many areas. Doing so provided efficiencies and better project management using the expanded skill sets of the combined divisions. After the merge, TS had reached its previous fiscal year 2008 authorized complement level with the addition of the communications staff, all the while expanding our services and supporting technology. It is only in the last two years due to PSVS funding that we were able to add 20 new positions to our staff and begin to catch up on the backlog of service tickets and projects. Hopefully, I've made the case that Technology Services will need additional staff to support expanding technology issues, initiatives. Although, we are also taking a measured approach to our development and expansion. As such, we chose not to request more positions to be funded through PSVS this budget cycle, and will reassess after the current funded positions are in place and producing. After the assessment, we may have requests for mid-year appropriation or for fiscal year 2023. With this approach in mind, we have requested one new position to be funded from the General Fund, an account clerk. Currently, the Business Management Group consists of a business manager and two clerk typists. This position is desperately needed to expand this team to keep up with increased workload from citywide additional staffing and technology needs, as well as the additional work of Technology Services becoming a full department within the city. Please don't try to read this slide. I'll zoom in on the selection of this page and substitute the slides to make reading a little easier. In February, the CIO Business Vision Survey was conducted through our partnership with Infotech Research Group, with various members of mid-to-upper management across all departments and divisions. The CIO Business Vision Survey is a multi-level satisfaction survey measuring how well Technology Services is doing across 13 core services as well as benchmarking against other like entities. This is the first time a comprehensive survey of Technology Services has been completed. The survey results in a multi-document report for staff to review and act upon. The survey will be conducted on an annual basis to measure improvement over time. What you see before you is the overall satisfaction scorecard. Here, we look at the overall satisfaction scores. Technology Services scored 69% in satisfaction and 71% in value. What this indicates is that Technology Services is doing well. We're not doing great, but given that we are just beginning to build up our staff and support the needs and initiatives, I was pleasantly surprised by these results. Please note that trending will become available once we complete the survey on an annual basis. This is another section of the Satisfaction Scorecard. Here, we are focusing on the top five areas of satisfaction. I would like to point out that the top three priorities of city departments, network and communication infrastructure, service desks, and devices, are all ranked within the top five for satisfaction. The second page of the survey results compares how we, the Technology Services Department of the city of Bakersfield, compare against 273 other government agencies listed as the industry average. Again, I'll zoom in on the specific areas of interest. Here is the same satisfaction importance ratings, market rankings for core services. But now we have the comparison of the industry average added. I would like to emphasize that for eight of the 13 core services, we are only a few percent below average, and for the remaining five services, we exceed the average. Our biggest opportunities for improvement are requirements gathering, projects, analytical capability, and reports. These are areas we have already begun to work developing and improving. Here again is the satisfaction and value scoring, but now as compared to the industry average. While we rank 6% below average in satisfaction and 3% below average in value, I would like to draw attention to the two metric items, IT budget as a percentage of revenue and IT staff as a percent of users. As of this survey for IT budget, we were 2% below the average of 3.9% of total revenues or statistically underfunded by $13 million from the industry average. Also, the survey indicated that we were 1.3% below the average of 4.7% of total staffing, or again, statistically understaffed by 27 full-time employees from the industry average. Given this information, I feel we are doing remarkably well, given our current budget and staffing levels. Again, a testament to my staff. Here are some of the accomplishments of the Administrative Division. The Administrative Division focuses on how technology will be used throughout in support of city and departmental initiatives and on higher priority or multi-agency projects. Two of the more notable accomplishments are the release of the regional radio system request for proposal in partnership with the County of Kern, and the deployment of a unified ID badging and door access initiative through a committee involving Technology Services, City Manager's Office, Human Resources, and RIS, and input from all departments. As we move through the different divisions, accomplishments, and action plans, you'll see an overall theme of partnership and collaboration. We are more than a service department, we are an in-house technology consultant. Over the past year, the Professional Services Division has been focusing on strengthening existing systems and security, implementing new systems, and developing promotional material for city initiatives. Two of the more visible projects are the new modern public website that is easier to find and easier to navigate and find information, as well as the City Council broadcasting and systems upgrades, which provides additional features and enhancements to better facilitate meetings. The Technical Services Division focuses on the day-to-day operations of technology and use throughout the city. This division, on multiple occasions this year, has had to pivot quickly to deploy equipment and modify processes to support city staff regarding work-from-home needs in response to public health orders, as well as supporting public safety efforts during periods of civil unrest. Looking ahead, the Administrative Division will focus its priorities on improving internal processes and working with the Business Management and Data Analysis Groups on developing informational dashboards for city management. Additionally, we will begin working with the City Manager's Office on forward-looking programs involving developing an overall digital strategy and smart city initiatives. For the Professional Services Division, we have the focus on internal development, beginning with the retooling of the data analysis team as they research their topics of artificial intelligence and machine learning, as well as implement systems to manage and use data. There's also the ongoing process improvements and project management and a new internal citywide security education program being implemented. The Technical Services Division will focus on continuous system projects that are requested from city departments, as well as ensuring systems are maintained and enhanced. This also includes the further development of the Microsoft 365 ecosystem for collaboration efforts throughout city departments, as well as the implementation or build-out phase of the regional radio system. These projects will be this division's largest focus in the coming year. Now on to the financial information. The department totals listed are not inclusive of capital improvement program funds. That will be reviewed separately. Operationally, we are requesting a marginal increase of just 5% or $559,000. The increase is in operational costs. Those costs increased just over $1 million, which was offset by a decrease in capital costs due to the fluctuation in equipment replacement from year to year. The majority, or $906,000 of it, are in, of the increase, are included in the Equipment Fund, which is an internal services fund. Another $112,000 is within the General Fund, and the remaining $63,000 are within PSVS. Areas where these increases occurred are internal service rates, property and liability insurance, the addition of a tertiary internet connection for increased bandwidth and resiliency due to migration of services to the cloud, repair and maintenance of equipment, additional voice-over IP, service for all new city staff, and additional training and education for TS staff. Focusing on how the budget is distributed through our three divisions, the majority, or 68%, is within the Technical Services Division, which contains the majority of capital or equipment costs. Another 25% within the Professional Services Division, and the remaining 7% within the Administrative Division, which holds the majority of costs associated with staff training and education. Effectively, 93% of our budget is directly addressing citywide technology needs. Looking at how the budget is broken out by fund, the increase is distributed across the funds with 3.4% within the General Fund, 8% within the Equipment Fund, and PSVS fund remaining relatively flat compared to previous year due to no new positions requested within Technology Services. Technology Services does not generate enterprise funds. So historically, our only funding sources we could access are either the General or Equipment Funds. Again, I cannot stress enough the importance of PSVS funding has for Technology Services now and in the future. Finally, with the Capital Improvement Program, Technology Services is requesting $1.5 million over the next three years to fund eight projects. There are $780,000 identified for upcoming fiscal year, bringing Technology Services' total proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 to just over $13 million. All but the office remodel focus on security and business continuity needs. The projects include upgrading existing and installing new building burglar alarm systems that are professionally monitored, extending the door access system to city facilities in the downtown area and begin satellite office installations, additional security cameras in areas of non-coverage in various city facilities, a replacement of the existing panic alarm system to implement an enterprise-level bi-directional emergency notification system for city facilities, adding security cameras to the solar canopies that the Public Works Department are beginning to install at various city locations, installing a second core network ring to connect downtown city buildings to enable fault tolerance and redundancy. And then finally, we have some funding to remodel areas within Technology Services to facilitate the staff that we have acquired over the last few years. With that, I thank you for your time and attention and hope that I've impressed upon you the transformational journey that Technology Services is undergoing and the value derived from the investment of, into from the investment of into our staff, research and services. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Provenos. Colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I again appreciate the work that you do. I know Bakersfield was plus or minus 20 years behind in technology, and catching up is a big lift, and appreciate your efforts, and definitely we can see we're moving in the right direction, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I want to do a shout out again to Aaron Kennedy, extra mile award winner. I am just so grateful for the responsiveness of Aaron and your team when the call comes, when we send out our cry for help. We are so dependent now on technology that when that stops, life can stop. So I do want to encourage us to find those extraordinary men and women. I see a huge difference. There are times when somebody shows up who is extremely inexperienced, and we're both Googling to find the same answer. An hour later, somebody else walks in two minutes and he goes, "That's all you need to do," and it's fixed like that. So let's keep searching for those extraordinary men and women, but thank you for what you've done for the chamber. I know it was a lot of work, and we are now reaping the benefits. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next presentation, please.
Our next presentation is ASM Mechanics Bank Arena Theater and Convention Center.
So you know, as time goes on, gentlemen, you have to make the, the presentations more exciting and exciting so we don't lose people. So here it is. Take it away, Mr. Steve.
Boy, it's tough to follow IT, too, isn't it? Probably, probably he's not going to work in about five minutes, I'm guessing. I was one of those service tickets today, as a matter of fact. Thank you, Council, Mayor, City Manager. ASM Global values the relationship. This is a great account for us, and we really appreciate it. We are only as good as the various city departments, and I don't care if it's Nick and Services, the City Manager's Office, Chris, who I drive crazy, Police, Fire, IT, all of them. They all come together. Who did I miss? Did I miss somebody? Oh, I missed Gina, sorry. Anyway, thank you for everything. I want to, well, I don't really need to introduce Ed Dorsey, who's our Assistant General Manager, city employee who's been with us before the arena even opened, and is our rock star. So Nick, what's your name? Ed, you're gonna, are you gonna work this, or are you gonna make me do it? You're gonna let me do it? Okay. So the first screen, that picture is from Blake Shelton, February of 2019, and unfortunately, I don't have a new picture to show you. And that's what we're up against this year. We have, we just haven't had any events in 14 months. Let's see. The impact of COVID, I mean, it's been devastating to our industry. This picture was taken in March. It was part of a, an event where all the venues around the country got together and created an awareness called Save Our Stages, and all the venues darkened and tried to wash their buildings with red and just bring light to the fact that the sports and entertainment, entertainment in particular, industry has been devastated by this. We closed on March 12th, the night that Cirque du Soleil was supposed to open, and by April 1st, we had slashed our operating costs from 350 a month to 150 a month. Our support staff, of which there are nine hourly, were 100% furloughed. The management team, another nine, were and still are 50% furloughed. We've continued to maintain and secure the facilities. We continue to book new events, as well as handling the postponements and cancellation. During the past 12 months, over 200 events postponed or canceled, some of them multiple times. The annual Jehovah's Witness convention of five or six events, 40,000 people into the community, second year is not going to happen. Over $8 million in expected revenue loss, and additional $1.5 million in future revenues expected to be lost as well. What are we currently doing? We, with the Governor's Guidelines, we are allowed to have 10% capacity. So for hockey, we now have 1,000 people. Masks are being worn. It's one of our challenges, as you can appreciate, folks coming in are doing their best to cooperate. Some don't particularly like it and give us a hard time, but I give the fans a lot of credit for embracing this and, and trying their best to follow the rules. One of the guidelines, which frankly does not make a whole lot of sense, is you cannot take food or beverages into the bowl. You must sit on the concourse in designated seating areas. But safety is very important to us, and so we are cleaning and sanitizing before, during and after each event. ASM Global has a program called Venue Shield, which is a very detailed program with cleaning procedures, policies that we are following. I mentioned the Condors. Their season has been shortened, shortened to 40 games, actually 39, as Friday night's game against Colorado was canceled. Both teams were warming up, and a Colorado player tested positive with two other players that were close by, so that game suddenly was canceled. And so our home season has ended, and this weekend, the team ventures to Las Vegas for the final three games. There are playoffs in our division. All seven teams will qualify. It is the only division in the American Hockey League that is having playoffs. All other divisions, their season ends on Sunday. The format is a little bit complicated. We will finish either first, second or third. That'll all be determined this weekend, and then we will find out if we do have, in fact, any home playoff games, which would be the following weekend. This downtime has allowed us to do a lot of improvements to the facility. These projects are part of the Public Safety and Vital Services programs that you all approved. The first picture here, a little bit difficult, but you see a picture of the concourse refurishment, excuse me. You can see the old maroon and whatever that green-blue color is, and to the right, a new vibrant-looking concourse with the graphics on the top. The restrooms have been refurbished as well. Here's the meeting rooms, and I think you've all seen these, the old meeting rooms and now the new, which are almost complete, going to help us book more events, bring more revenues to the venue, a great upgrade. And IT was a big part of that, so thank you. Another project is the Convention Center floor. Here's the before, and here is the after. That project is almost complete, and again, there's a return on investment to this, and so we're very excited to get reopened and start making use of the floor. Pedestrian Bridge, you can see what it looked like and the painting project that's been going on, bring new life and actually extend the life of that bridge. And this is not all that exciting, but there was a rigging safety improvements of $35,000. And if you look up 60 feet high and you see a concert moving, and these guys are hanging from the beams and on the catwalks, and this was a very important project, and thank you for the monies for this. This is our capital improvement request for the upcoming year. We want to continue our building safety upgrades. This is new cameras. There's, there are some areas that you can't see from cameras. There'll be $100,000 requests for HVAC upgrades, replacement of building cleaning equipment, and our video production room is sadly in need of upgrades. Here is our event update. There are 11 shows that are currently on sale. These shows all require, except for maybe one, 100% capacity. If we don't get 100% capacity, these shows, some of which have already been postponed once, and I think Chris Stapleton, it's already been postponed twice, will get postponed again. Not on this list that I can't go into detail about are another 15 shows that we feel confident are going to confirm. One of them is in the amphitheater, outside in the amphitheater, July, as soon as July 30th, and there's two August events, including this one. So just real quickly, here's what goes on in the touring business. These tours put together a routing that crisscrosses around the country, and you can't really pick and choose where you're going to go. So that's why you see these tours kind of take their, their template and kind of move them a year. So if you were to look at Chris Stapleton, for example, it's on the exact same Thursday in June in 2022. And there's some safety concerns, and the big thing is you need 100% capacity, unlike hockey, where we've got 10%, you go to 25%. That just does not work in the touring business for these artists. And there's some safety concerns, but it's very expensive to tour. So the key here to get open and to get these events happening, not only here but around the country, is to get to 100%. Now, I've had both my COVID shots. That's going to be, I think, a big part of this. As you all know, June 15th, the Governor has said no more tier system. What does that look like for large events? Is that going to mean 100% right out of the gate? We suspect not. There's going to be some kind of guidelines. Is it going to be mandated vaccination? Is it going to be mandated negative tests? Was in the past 72 hours, we've seen that in other cities and other states. We just don't know at this time. Hope to have some clear directions so that it's, we can start to plan to really reopen. When the hockey season ends in, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have to shut down again, unfortunately. Here's our proposed budget. Honestly, it's pretty aggressive. It's going to depend on can we get open. All the surveys that ASM Global does shows that people are very anxious to get out and start doing things. I'm sure you go to restaurants and you see how anxious people are. And so we feel good that once we get going, that people are going to come out. We are concerned about what are the restrictions? What are they going to be? So this is, is where we hope to be, and as you all know, city losses are guaranteed never to exceed the $415,000. Anything beyond that is borne by ASM Global. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I know, Christian, you want to some point jump, jump in here or? No, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ekerson. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation today, and looking forward to getting back to business. And, you know, certainly, I know you are, too. And these assets are great for our community, and certainly they're, they're huge for downtown Bakersfield. I'm excited to see a lot of the improvements. I'd like to go by and visit and see them firsthand to the facilities. These capital improvements have been on the list for a long time. We've talked about them. I'm wondering about the, the theater and the lobby there, and when that is scheduled to be improved. And then also, former Councilwoman Sullivan would often talk about the restrooms, and I think that's an important piece as well. And so if you could tell us about that.
Well, the restrooms have been taken care of.
Perfect. Great.
And you are welcome to come tour anytime. The future, our longer-term capital plan does include doing something with the lobby. I'm glad you brought it up. Does need carpet, the ceiling has got asbestos, you know, things like that, needs some updating. At the same time, I would think we would want to maintain, you know, some of the history of that theater, some events that played in the theater, Rolling Stones, Jimi Hendrix. I mean, there's a lot of unbelievable history there, and I think somehow keep that look, but do the, do the updates to it. I think that's what you're, you're getting to?
What I'm getting to is I want to be able to attract more conferences, conventions to come to Bakersfield and to stay here, and I don't want our facilities to be one of the factors for them not to come to Bakersfield. I'm excited about some of the conference room facilities upgrades. It looks great. I know that was always something that some folks thought maybe not Bakersfield, but, but now that we've improved that, that's a step in the right direction.
I think you're going to see more and more music concerts in the theater. That's getting to be more and more of a sweet spot. And as we kind of strategize on how best to work the calendar, we want to leave more and more dates. One of the challenges is that conferences tend to be, need more room, not more room, but they book farther out, if that makes sense. And so you don't necessarily want to get locked into something like that and then lose an opportunity, you know, for a relatively, you know, big name like Willie Nelson or Sammy Hager or something like that. That's, that's a theater show, so.
Okay. Well, in any event.
But one of the areas we do, and I apologize, one of the areas that we do want to grow is the meeting business, the convention business. We work closely with the Marriott and the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Great. Well, in any event, I think that the lobby needs an upgrade, and I'd like to make a request that staff make that a priority when we're looking at those facilities. Again, I'm encouraged by the great progress, but I think we need to, we need to focus on that.
Yeah, Chris and I have already had one conversation, so thank you.
Okay. Do we have an estimate on what the upgrades would, would cost to the lobby? Have we done that work?
Just, I mean, it could be, it depends what you want to do, honestly. I mean, I think a minimum of $50,000 to do some basic things, like I said, like the carpet, the ceiling, some of those things, and then we can, we can get into as far as you want to go.
Do we know when the last time that lobby has been upgraded?
Ed has every detail in his head. I can ask him about a show from, from 2006, and he'll give me the date, and he'll come within 100 of the, of the paid attendance. So I know we did, we did some work and, and the wallpaper was redone.
The wallpaper was redone, but 2006 was the new carpet.
Yeah.
2006.
That's a long time.
15 years. Okay, it's time for new carpet. Thank you.
Can I go spend the money right now? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
No, not enough? Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And just going back to the question about the ladies' rooms for the sake of Councilmember, former Councilmember Sullivan and all of us, when, when was that completed? Councilmember Gray and I visited there when we had a meeting, and it looked like the mirrors were 100 years old still.
I think, the mirrors, too? Okay. Probably the day after you got there. I don't know.
All right, excellent. Okay.
I'm sorry, but I know Jackie called me on more than one occasion, believe me.
She's called me many times.
Is the restroom done? Yes.
Yeah, and we know that when we are able to attract conventions here and conferences, that that can really help with our revenue, and the attractiveness of that does make a lot of difference. I know in the past, we've had some challenges where people have chosen not to come here, and so we're excited about the upgrades. Thank you for your investment during a very difficult year.
Sure, thank you.
I don't see any other requests for this, and so City Manager, City Clerk, would you please call the final presentation?
Mayor, our final presentation is going to be General Government.
Welcome, Mr. Hewitt. Any, anything, Mr. Clug, before he begins?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was actually going to just do a quick time check, and I know we have a, a big presentation lineup for our next workshop, but we have, you know, we have exceeded our 4:00 PM mark and wanted to just test the, the metal of the council. I think our energy has been well spent, but fairly spent. I think our energy has been well-spent, but fairly spent today, and if you'd like, we could circle back with this general government presentation at our next workshop.
And is it invigorating and all of that?
It's invigorating, but very short.
Oh.
I can get through it pretty quickly.
Okay. What, are you okay? What does "very quickly" mean? You're okay?
You can give me about 10 minutes. I can probably get through it in 10 minutes.
Are we good? Yes. All right.
Well, good afternoon. I better get going. I get the timer on me. We're going to be talking about the legislative and general government side of the House today, and that side of the House has actually gotten a bit smaller, as you've heard from some other departments today, that were elevated to that department status. So again, hopefully, this will go by quickly. On the legislative side of the House, we're talking about both the budget for the mayor's office and for the city council itself, and I'll just jump right in to give you the numbers. Overall, we're looking at about a $3,200 increase between the two units when you combine them together. This includes, for the mayor's office, all the personnel and salary costs for staffing, as well as some miscellaneous operating costs. For the council, it includes all of the salary and benefit costs that there are, along with some operating costs, including the League of California Cities, now CalCities, membership cost, as well as some shared cost as we portion out the cost for things like the broadcast system. A portion of that goes into the city council budget. So that's really predominantly what those two numbers equate to. As you can see, not a lot of movement year to year, and there were no major budgetary increases in either of those numbers. I did want to, for the council, to note that there are no changes to any sort of travel budgets or anything. That's all there in case we're able to start to get back into that mode. Those dollars are there for your consideration. On the executive side of the House, we're really talking about the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, and the risk management division. Just a few things that we've already touched upon today, so I will not go too far in depth. We spent the better part of the last 14 months going through the COVID mitigation process for the organization. This body did not adopt really any sort of regulatory aspects related to COVID restrictions, et cetera, but the city was placed in a position, especially from an internal standpoint, as Christie mentioned, where we really had to wade through several different layers of COVID mitigation and operational impacts. And as she mentioned, we were able to maintain 85% to 90% staffing capacity during that period of time. That was, from our standpoint, a big success. Our permitting counters stayed open, the front door to City Hall North stayed open, Treasury stayed open. Many of those core services were open to the public, and I'm really proud of our staff for being able to make that happen. Cares funding, Mr. McKeegan mentioned this, $33.5 million expended in four months. Over 50% of that $33.5 million went to businesses, nonprofits, and individuals, including the BECAres program that Mr. McKeegan mentioned. We also partnered with all of the different chambers in town, as well as the Kern Community Foundation and others to, again, get messaging out there, get that business support that was needed out there, both in terms of dollars directly to small business, as well as some of those support functions, including some messaging that you see here all about town. Along that same lines, during this past year, where we started our budget process way back when and had to pivot very quickly for the current fiscal year, I think there was a difference of about $28 million in kind of what we were expecting our revenues to grow at and what we revised them to. So again, we brought forward this body a budget that was balanced, that actually contained quite a few enhancements, notwithstanding the challenges. Most of those enhancements were on the Phase 2 side of the PSVS measure, and several major initiatives were implemented, too many to list, but I know all of our departments are covering for you in the next several workshops. So let's talk about numbers. I want to just focus quickly on two numbers. One, in the city manager's office, it looks like, wow, the budget's going up 70%. What's going on there? I'll explain that in just a minute, and Mr. Clegg may have a few comments as well. That number is really driven by two things. One, we are recommending four additional positions within the manager's office, and we'll get to those in just a minute. And then there's three positions, two full-time and one part-time, where the costs were allocated in a different part of the budget last year, and we're shifting those costs to the manager's office this year as part of the oversight for those positions. So there's a portion of those, that dollar amount, that is simply shifting the cost for a couple of positions that are related to that CalVIP grant into the department. Again, technology services and human resources used to be on this table, no longer here. And then finally, on the risk management side, we've been working, and risk manager Gina Covey and her team, amazing work that they do, they have seen some very significant shifts in the insurance market. As you can imagine, different experience across city governments and other levels of government across the nation have changed the way insurers are looking at these types of accounts. What I can tell you is both on the liability side and on the worker comp side, those costs have continued to increase. One thing I would note, though, is that the city is part of an insurance pool on the liability side called Excel, and we have been, we are a founding member and have been a member for over 30 years, 35 years. That relationship has proven, especially during these difficult insurance market times, when the market has been tightening, that has been a very productive and a very good partnership to be in. So absent that, I think we would see some different shifts in some of these numbers. This is just that same, those same bottom-line numbers, but by funding source. So again, you're seeing some increases on the PSVS side of things, a big percentage. But again, that's because a lot of those positions that were proposed or that were moved were in that bucket, so that's why you're seeing that big jump. So let's talk about those two different buckets. One are the new positions and one are the moved positions. These are the four new positions that staff is recommending for the city manager's office. There's a budget director position, two assistant to the city manager positions that have different focus areas, and then a communications coordinator. I may turn it over to Mr. Clegg real quick to talk about the first three. I'm happy to talk about the last one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Just to reflect quickly on these, right now, the budget for the ninth largest city in California is put together by our finance director, assistant finance director, and two staff in the city manager's office. Typically, a city organization of our size would have a budget officer and probably four to six budget analysts that would put together the budget and monitor different financial actions taken by the council and do some analysis on those throughout the year. We're fortunate to have incredible staff that wear many hats and stretch themselves to get these things done. And while this doesn't even create that full capacity that we might see, it does have a dedicated person who would be responsible for basically leading the team and putting together the budget each year and looking at our financial analysis and from, you know, policymaking perspective, and that will add some important capacity, both for those financial considerations, as well as freeing up some of the time in the city manager's office to continue to focus on those citywide initiatives. Second item there, well, the next two, as we've talked about, you know, the city council goals and trying to accomplish the big initiatives in front of us, again, we remain somewhat lean in our ability to push citywide initiatives that are new and innovative while we are trying to run the operations of the city and, you know, upgrade our ERP and go paperless and hire 100 officers. You know, many of these things that are part of the regular operations, we're very challenged to run the day-to-day operations and tackle some of these initiatives. And so these two positions are envisioned to help us push citywide improvements. So performance and innovation, this is about the use of data. This is about having a performance measures system. This is about trying to have process improvements throughout the organization. And absent some additional capacity, someone to focus solely on that, it will be when the city manager, assistant city managers have, you know, sort of that extra time to focus on some of those areas. And this, again, would allow us to really drive some of those improvement efforts. That second position is really about community engagement and inclusion. When we have right now our ADA coordinator, we're mandated to have somebody on staff, be our Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator, as well as Title VI coordinator, and we've made that assignment to one of our analysts in the office, and Brianna does a great job following up with that, but it is one of, again, many other duties. And so this role would hold that space to do those ADA functions, those Title VI functions, as well as reaching out to our different stakeholder groups, to our Veterans Affairs, to our nonprofits, to our faith-based community, and have some of that focus on engagement and inclusion that we talked about earlier today, the importance of being able to do that on a citywide basis. And so that's, there would be a focus for that role. And again, in addition to the assistant to the city manager that we've recently added, it's just giving us that capacity to drive some of these citywide initiatives for an organization of this size.
Yes, and then on the communications coordinator piece, what we've learned over the last year or so is that our public information officer, Joe Conroy, is a very valuable asset. He is essentially, I will say, on-call 24/7. So what we're looking to do is create a bit of capacity to, one, provide some redundancy for the media and for staff internally, and then, two, to really expand some of our programs that are under his umbrella. We are looking to do more internal training and external marketing essentially in communication and outreach, and this position would go a long way in helping us just to breathe a little bit in terms of the media and communication function of the organization. As you all know, communication with external stakeholders and internal stakeholders is multifaceted, across those multiple platforms. This position would be a communications generalist position that would fall under the PIO to really get at more frequent and more comprehensive communication approaches. Happy to go into detail if there are more questions there. And then just quickly, these positions are already in the budget. This is part of those, part of the costs that are being shifted from one unit of the city to the manager's office. Again, just to give you some sense of the dollars, both PSVS-funded positions. Just quickly, some strategic initiatives. As you hear from other departments on the PSVS side of things, you're going to hear about all the different programs that they're proposing to add through PSVS next year. These are just some highlights of some items that don't fit in one bucket or another in terms of the departments. So we've taken those on to talk to you about those. The dollar amounts are probably not as great as some of the department proposals, but again, we'll walk through those. So I just kind of explained what they are. Let's talk about what they are. This year, and then going, and it's funded going into next year, is the Clean City Initiatives. Those include those Clean City teams and the pop-up events you've heard a lot about. Those dollars are budgeted predominantly in the Public Works Department. This $300,000 would be budgeted to essentially enhance this program a bit more through enforcement, education, and our ambassador program, really looking to solidify partnerships with external stakeholders, including Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, to create, again, some of those programs around these key areas. And then there has been ongoing discussion from this body about expanding both the private security and the biohazard cleanup. And so this proposes to put an additional $700,000 in the budget for what we're calling strategic expansion. It can't be citywide everywhere all the time, but staff would look to bring back some key areas where those resources could be expanded based upon data and demand, and this would provide the foundation and the funding to do that. The last couple slides here, public safety partnership. Again, what we'd like to do here is re-engage the district attorney's office. As we hear about, there are a lot of underprosecuted crimes due to predominantly changes at the state level that the city and the county, to a certain extent, have really no control over. So what this would do is create that partnership and provide some funding to provide some resources to get at some of these quality of life and other crime-related issues that are impacting neighborhoods and businesses. In terms of the eternal audit, we talked a little bit about that already. We're in Phase 1 of that. This would provide additional resources going into next year to continue to evaluate and implement best practices across the organization, bringing in that third-party firm telling us, you know, here are some areas to work on, here are some things we need to tighten up. But again, supports the efforts of the city to address things like workflows, customer service, and enhancements to services that are being provided to the public. It also dovetails nicely into the ERP project that we've continued to talk to you about. Last slide is our employee development, looking to, again, invest $100,000 in the 1,700 or so, and it'll be over 1,800 next year, employees across the organization to focus on things like organizational values, customer service, skill sets. Again, the lion's share of the services that are provided by the city are done by employees that work for the city. We want to continue to make sure that we're reinvesting in them. Last thing, I know Councilmember Freeman's gone. I was able to do a bit of research. City manager's offices vary from city to city, and this is not exhaustive, but the city of Fresno, city manager's office has about 30 staff. Anaheim, about 19, and then Ontario, about 29. I did look up to Sacramento. They're the outlier, at least in a few that I looked at. They have 70. Just, and again, apples to oranges, depending on the types of services that are coming out of those offices, but we'll provide more exhaustive lists moving forward. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions. Appreciate your indulging us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hewat, for the presentation, and thank you to city manager's office for their support day in and day out, to residents of Wartu and the entire city. I'm interested in the communications coordinator position. I have a lot of questions and ideas that I'll save for outside of this meeting, but the one point I wanted to make is regarding to the PSVS newsletter and wanted to see where we are in revamping that newsletter. I think that's a really important tool to communicate with the public how we're spending their tax dollars and are we doing what we said we're going to do. I'm very proud of all the work that we're doing, but I'm not sure we're telling the story enough in the public, and I'm almost certain that we can do much more to make sure that those stories are being told.
Yes, we can, and this is one of those areas that we can create some capacity to get at. I know Mr. Conroy, right now, it seems like daily, is responding to three, four, five, six media inquiries with deadlines at 5:00 PM that same day, and that's one aspect of his job, so things like the PSVS newsletter, coordinating video and other content for social media feeds that speak to exactly what you're talking about, those are all things that we can continue to create capacity around, and we would look to, we would look to do that, and this position would give us the ability, I think, to really tackle a lot of those things. But we would like to get back to doing that PSVS newsletter, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see other requests for my colleagues to speak. Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. And now, Madam City Clerk, did you receive any public speaker cards on this workshop?
Mayor, we received two public speaker cards. The first public speaker this evening is Emma De La Rosa. Riddy Patel.
Thank you. As Miss Patel is coming up, for those of you who are viewing online, if you'd like to submit a comment, you're welcome to submit an email to the city clerk, to the city council via the city clerk. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
I want to talk about Greg's presentation and how much, how frustrating it is to think that you can solve the root issues of crime with police officers playing basketball with children. That's so idiotic. It's so ignorant. And Ms. Gray, the comment of, this isn't what my constituents want. You had a constituent here last week that said they want to defund the police. So as they said, get [BLEEP] together. And foremost, Karen, do you know how many studies for decades have been done before you were born, before you were born, for sure, Eric, and before many of you were born, on the root issues and the root causes of crime? Have you even read any of them? Do you read? Because I really don't understand how you guys can sit here and be like, we don't know what to do. This is so difficult. I'm so helpless. There are so many solutions out there. I literally talked to the executive director of a faith-based organization that the city works at and is very clearly-- works at and is very clearly needs more help, and literally said, "I'm tired of the city calling what's going on right now a homeless crisis, but not treating it like the crisis it is. We have a 1% vacancy rate. You guys are [BLEEP]. There are all these CBOs, all these community-based organizations, that will tell you, "This is what you need to do. These are the root issues, the root causes of crime." The police department is a reactionary solution. It does not address the root causes of crime. And if you don't know what that is and you don't know what the root cause is, you know how to contact me, Karen. I'll give you a [BLEEP] ton of studies. I'll give all of you the studies. But you guys are here acting helpless. It's [BLEEP] annoying. Get your [BLEEP] together.
Do we have any other speakers?
Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. And no requests from council to speak, seeing nothing else. We stand adjourned at 4:26. Thank you.